Started off with rental registration, doing both of them. And then as we, when we got to looking at this, we decided that my C three might be a bigger focus to include some more things. And so we wrapped it all together. Uh, and really as a, as part of what will become uh the my C three program. So right now, um, my C three program, uh, the presentation tonight, we'll talk about weed enforcement. We'll talk about rental registration, uh, community improvements, which is sort of the previous things that my C three was, a little bit on transit camp cleanups and then some information on public realm improvements. Um, as you know, my C three was started in 2022, earlier the year. Uh, focus intended in that was on my, uh, my city, my neighborhood, my home. Um, in 2023, the responsibilities for the program are being shifted to community development. Uh, so many of the things are centered around code enforcement and things that our department does. We felt like it was more appropriate to be there. Um, the emphasis moving forward will be on city accountability, non-residential accountability, zoning and property maintenance, and building community trust through outreach, transparency, consistency, accountability, and residential re- uh reinforcement. Yeah, we want to maintain the goals. Uh, but these were presented last year, education, motivation, and beautification. Uh, tonight, we want to kind of talk about the current state of affairs on each of the five topics, a plan for moving forward in 2023, and hopefully get council concurrence and direction on the things we would like to do moving forward. Weed's management of the rental registration ordinance that we were asked to discuss tonight. Uh, concur with refocus on community improvement changes, transit cap cleanup, just a general overview. Uh, receive direction on public realm improvements, and then schedule a special meeting on January ninth for reappraisal of smites. So start current state of weed management. Uh, as we started digging this, uh, end of this this year, there's a couple of things that have have, um, hampered our ability to do as well as we should, and we think we've got a handle on now and we want to fix. One of them was the change in 2020 that attempted to clarify the responsibility for maintenance of right of way areas from the city to the adjacent property owners. And it sounds simple, but uh, if you look at the map of it, it's very difficult and it's made it harder. And we've had to struggle getting through it. We, we think we're, we're there now. Uh, the intent was to define the business owner and homeowner's responsibility better and to eliminate the fact that the property owner was responsible for going to the center line of the road. Um, just put together a little, um, drawing here that Tricia found. It kind of shows what we, you know, what the areas of responsibility are now. The homeowner, it's that area between the sidewalk and the curb. Uh, let's see, you know, anything in the tree lawn, if their tree of, uh, the tree obscures the, the stop sign, they're responsible for sidewalk maintenance and repair. And then any overgrown, low hanging branches, dead trees and replacement of those. So that's the things that the code now requires. Adjacent property owner may be a private property owner, residence, HOA, metro district, C dot, railroad, Adams County, school district, and the RTD. We run into all those as we're doing uh enforcement. Uh, the majority of the right of way out there, uh, where we're having issues is really not the city's responsibility. So again, we're trying to, we're trying to narrow that down so we can notify the right folks. The other thing that has happened is there was an ordinance changed in 2021 that greatly impacted our ability to issue a notice of violation and then carry out the abatement. In the past, we would issue a notice of violation if people didn't do the work. We'd get our contract to go do the abatement. We'd send them a bill, get a lien on the property if they didn't pay it. Now we have to give everybody the opportunity to appeal and go to uh the hearing officer to appeal. And so if we do that, the way the code set up, basically it can take up to sixty to seventy days to get through that process. So, um, there's really not a lot we can do about that. However, we do have some plans for how we can improve our ability to respond when we do have somebody that wants a, a hearing. But we've, we've, we've not done many hearings this year because we've just, you know, we've got, our team made a choice to go back and cite continuously, but that doesn't always work. People will not pay us. They will not do the cleanup. Uh, one of the things we also wanted to, to kind of lay out, these are some examples of, of uh the way that things are kept. We wanted to make sure it goes, we want to make sure that we understand your expectations in the right way and that we're, uh, we're achieving those. So these are some we found that we think pretty much comply with our code and, and what we think is what's wanted. We just wanted to make sure that we got that right. The one on the bottom right has some growth into the right of way, into the road that we need, that, that we know that's an issue. Yes, sir.
You know, I think the, the picture there on the top left. Now fortunately or unfortunately, shouldn't be the standard. And the reason I suggest that is a lot of the DI series, some of the chemicals that we talked about earlier about the stone coming in. It just, it just, as we use those all winter, you never get good growth in the spring if you get a late storm or something like that. I really think elevating it has the best opportunity if we're going to continue, you know, requiring that type of landscape in the median. Again, I think, um, I got 140 the areas that have rock with kind of, you know, native plants built, uh, worked into that landscaping is more conducive to like long-term quality of, of the median, easier to maintain, uh, because some of the, like the grass on the top right. Um, it's never going to look great because we always have to maintain it.
That's what we're here for.
Yes, sir. And I think we use a lot of the native grass. Now, the thing about that is sometimes it gets like eight or nine feet tall and then you can't see. So it kind of becomes a safety hazard too. So having something, you know, like the, the top two. But uh, there's the right of way and, and then drivers can actually see, you know, what oncoming traffic.
Okay.
Yes, sir. So I don't, this is a quite a large, uh, program idea. I'm not suggesting you have to go all the way into this, but you know, the county where my parents live had a grant program that if you remove grass and put, um, you know, drought resistant landscaping in, they would pay fifty percent or something along those lines. I think it'd be really a good idea for us to incentivize the HOAs um, to change over their mediums to something that maybe is more drought resistant, requires less water, and maybe less maintenance. And I guess my goal is to remove some of the green grass close to the road because green grass has its place, um, probably not right next to the roadway. And so I think, you know, what you see on the bottom left, top left, both, I think are great. It's just my personal opinion, but I think they're much easier to maintain as well. Even though that picture on the bottom left, about fifty feet up is where you see that, that plant hanging over there, right? So just maintaining, you know, have maintainable plants where twice a year you could go out. I think that's manageable, but if you're having to go out five, six times a year to cut back overgrowth, then it's likely unrealistic for a choice maintains.
And one of the things we want to do in the LDC that we just kicked off, rewrite of that is really explore all of our landscaping standards for that, that very reason. So I think that's a great opportunity that we can look at it comprehensively. So, okay, Tricia. Oh, these are just more examples. Um, I think the conversation gets apart and leads us to where we, everybody's in agreement with that. So, um, what do we want to do moving forward? Currently, public work schedules five mows per year. Uh, they have put in a proposal to change their budget for more frequent mowing. Uh, that mowing would get up to a minimum of seven times a year. Again, they don't want to put an exact number, which because you don't know how much it's going to rain. You don't know how much you'll have to cut, but feel like a minimum of seven is, is a practical number to keep ahead of it. Uh, that we're, uh, we're able to keep ahead of the weeds. Uh, contract with external mowing companies, uh, for mowing support. And then the numbers you see here are four hundred and forty thousand, nine thousand for annual budget increase for mowing, three sixty-five to implement open space restoration, and then a hundred thousand for additional equipment. And that's going to be brought back again in January for you to consider. Uh, one of the things we're working on is developing a better map that shows responsibilities clear. Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, and so they did five times a year for this entire year.
I'm sorry?
Did they do five times a year for this entire year? Did they do it five times?
No.
This year?
Yes. Well, he's saying, yes, they did.
Yes.
Okay, because it looked good.
Okay, yes, sir.
The one that drives me crazy is the native grass on Quebec.
Yep.
Because we get hammered about it every year because it only gets cut late in the fall and it gets extremely tall. Um, and I know, I remember when it was put in. Got to let it get to a certain height. It's got to be mature. It's got to drop its seeds so it rejuvenates every year. Um, but I think it gets way too high and needs to be cut a couple of times a year because otherwise we get hammered because it doesn't meet the stringency of the code that we place on our residents. And they couldn't care less if it's native or not native. Um, they're getting hammered uh, for, for their growth on their things. And, um, it appears to them, and it has forever, that we aren't doing our job. We're not meeting our own requirements at that.
I think that's just, that's a function of the code and ordinance. And if we want to change the code or ordinance with respect to the heights of the grass, we clearly do that. And then, you know, cut them according. We're, we're just trying to cut them in accordance with the ordinance as it's currently written.
So an ordinance that says that it can get four feet high before we cut it on native grass?
Native grasses are currently exempt.
Yeah, it, it's just one of those things that it has been forever since we put it in, that we continue to get hammered on.
Are you talking south of seventy second or north of seventy second?
I'm talking south of seventy second, up on that hill.
Go back and go.
Yeah, and it just, it, it, it gets huge and, and it's one of those things where soon as you cite somebody for having weeds or, or growth over a certain height, that's where I take the most complaints is because, take a look at Quebec, you guys aren't doing your share either. And they're looking at it from, uh, violations that they received or that they can't see down the road. And I don't know how long, is it every year you have to let that receed?
No, so actually that's a, that's a irrigated native right there. So we actually are, are watering that throughout the year. So it's going to grow a lot faster and more rapidly than just, uh, native grasses that's not irrigated. So that actually gets, uh, every other month, it gets mowed down to, or we mow that down every other month.
Yeah, but just, there's times where I see it just.
Well, it does. It, it's going to, it's going to grow to three or four feet tall.
And then, and, uh, there's also some native, that's the same scenario alongside of buying your park.
That's the same exact stuff. It's the same look. It's a, it's a design standard that was, uh, put in. That's the way it was designed. It's, it's, it's intended look. Our designers actually, uh, use Commerce City as, uh, an example of what it should look like frequently. And they'd ask us, they'll, they'll ask us to come out and, and take pictures before we mow it so that they can show it to other places where they're trying to achieve. So that's the achieve. We're, we're achieving the look that was designed and implemented. So that's something that we would like to change. That's a, that's a direction that we would need to have to.
Well, I, I, of course, actually, my preference would be that we would mow it more often just to keep it looking cleaner because it gets looked at raggy by the time it's something real. Just, it's just the complaints that I receive.
I have a question. So, and I think Charles is saying that some people feel like there's a double standard. You know, that the city can do one thing, but it, the same rules don't apply to them. Uh, so I know some people who said this, they have native grasses in this, as they're.
Up on this hill.
With the, they, they use to fill their, their landscapes.
Sure.
Are they allowed to have native grasses? Okay, so they could let them grow then to the same height, correct?
Yeah, I mean, as, as it's currently structured, they, they, their standards should be the same as ours.
I know one person that talked to me over the summer last year that said that I believe he got cited, but he has all the native grasses in his, and I remember her at him because when I was campaigning, I knocked on his door and he answered the door and talked to him. So, uh, yeah, he, he brought that up and he wondered if, because he said, you know, that he knew that native grasses get allowed.
And I can't speak to that specific situation, but there's a, uh, there's a lot of situations where people assume things are weeds when they are native grasses and vice versa. So a lot of that is education, not only from internally on our staff who inspects and us who've cut, but also the general public at large. So we could probably do a better job of educating everybody as to what's a weed, what's a grass? What is the new state? If we decided we need a new standard for heights, the theme is make sure we get that out to everybody. So everybody appreciates that and both us as a municipality as well as a private property owner adhere to this next step.
Additionally, with native grasses is when it's not native grass is when it gets, um, the weeds start growing in. So then you have weeds and native grass and it's what's that ratio and how do you balance that?
Right, and do we have, are those ratio standards met on the, on the city property then? Do we know?
Or? That's, that's an undefined. How, how do you determine what is the ratio of native grass versus um, the weeds? And then it becomes a preference. What do you like to look at? That kind of stuff. So that's something that has not been defined. So it, it's just an undefined. So one of the pictures, um, back here, for example, this one, it's native grass and weeds. So something for us to consider.
I think one of the things that occurred this year as well, which may help with the consistency, is the code enforcement. Um, uh, folks have been inspecting ours and giving us notice of violations as approach, that's appropriate to that too. So the same standards should be, being applied to our municipal properties as, uh, the community at large.
As it should. All right, um, again, uh, so I was saying, we're going to be developing a map to try to help us to know who to, who to enforce will. Uh, again, it's very complicated with all the different owners and we want to make sure we get it right so we can move quickly. Uh, Director of Urban Renewal Areas, Bob Bill, is going to, uh, maintain the URA areas on a regular schedule at a higher standard. And primarily Derby, he's going to work with us on the others to make sure that we're, we got the property ownership right and we're doing, uh, keeping those looking good. Uh, we're, Public Works is creating and publishing a mowing schedule timeline. Uh, they're not going to have, we're not going to be there on, on June the sixth to do it, but within a window. But again, based on the rain and, and showing the numbers of how often they do that. Uh, we've been talking with the city attorney. We're going to be setting abatement hearings, uh, trying to set up several days a month or availability. So our hearing officers there. So that if we do have a need, we don't have to then start working on getting the hearing officer. We've got some standard dates that, uh, we can either have cases or not. Um, and then, once we get through all this before next, uh, weed season, we want to send out notice to all the property owners and all the HOAs clarifying the responsibilities. Uh, sometimes I think that we, when we change the code in 2020, we may not have done it as robustly as we need to do. And so I think a lot of people that we issued notices of violation to, that have no clue that they're responsible for that area between their fence and the sidewalk. So we want to try to, try to clarify that. Um, again, we want to try and get a handle on it. We want to provide one notice of violation, then escalate it to an abatement hearing. If that's what they want to do, we'll do the abatement. Instead of adding up and adding up the fines, it's, you know, it works out better for everybody to get rid of the problem. And then they don't have to pay nearly as much of a cost as it does when they escalate through fines. Uh, we're working to schedule our proactive code enforcement in non-residential properties in the past. That's been pretty much, uh, in residential areas and we wanted, again, we're trying to hold the businesses accountable also and making sure that they're doing everything we're asking our residents to do. Uh, and then we want to, uh, work with our other jurisdictions just to make sure we've got a good relationship that we've got a C dot issue. We got, we've got somebody to call that we can say, help us come in here and do this instead of having to chase people around. Yes, sir, ma'am.
I think another criteria that I would like to see on the one notice of violation and escalates to abatement is if those weeds go over a certain height, then it ought to just be an automatic, we just go in and do it.
Yes.
Mr. Heeder doesn't like this idea. I can tell.
I, I don't have an opinion.
I mean, we just, we just see on, on a regular basis where, I mean, some of this property is, it just gets to the point where this stuff is three foot tall.
Yeah.
And we're sitting around waiting for this administrative process. I mean, once you trigger over a certain height, it ought to be an automatic, we're just going to go knock it down and we're going to send you the bill for doing so in order to get the appearance back the way we want it. Because we can follow the administrative process and then draw it out for two months, three months, four months. Meanwhile, everybody's driving around looking at these state forests of weeds in our city, thinking, boy, the city doesn't care about weeds.
You're talking about property, you know, that's, that's right of way that the adjacent property owner is, is responsible for, that makes sense. If you're talking about entering private property, then you have different legal hurdles you need to be concerned with before you go on and, and cut those weeds.
So I think just cutting to chase, we'll look at it. We'll bring back the legal ramifications if there are any and we'll have that conversation.
Yes, sir.
One of the things I noticed especially this time of year, it's not that we have a problem with weeds because they've been mowed by now or should be mowed by now. But there is a ton of tumbleweeds that are blowing up against the fences of these HOAs and they'll get six or eight feet high and they're huge piles. And the maintenance for the HOAs doesn't come out as often as if they would during the summertime when they're having the mow. And they end up either blowing into the residents' yards or blowing across the street to the next HOA. Um, are we, do we currently, um, cite the HOAs for HOA properties to, um, remove the tumbleweeds? Because I think we just move the problem from one place to the next and the next. And in the process, everybody's yards ends up with seeds that are growing weeds the next year. And so I didn't know, um, this time of year, our code enforcement doesn't have to deal with height of grass so much or native grass or weeds. But, um, the tumbleweeds that have matured and are blowing down the streets, it seems like they're up against the back fence of the HOA I'm in. Then the wind changes and the next week they're piled up against the, the neighbors across, you know, across the street. I don't know, do we have a, does our code enforcement deal with tumbleweeds and things of that nature that are moving?
So tumbleweeds specifically now because of that, they are moving. So they're not affixed or attached to a property. Um, but there are other, other elements within our code that have to do with like elbow brush and, and things of that nature that you could cite people for. Um, but to your point, one day they're there, the next day they've blown off to somebody else's yard.
Or, or one day they're there, the next day there's twice as many, and the next day there's three times as many. And, um, from, from a maintenance standpoint, um, it would reduce the amount of weeds that are growing in people's yards the following year. And, um, you know, sometimes they get really bad. They get bad up in the reunion area. I know by Christie's house, they can blow up against the fence. We've discussed it years, for years now. And I noticed today driving, uh, into work that there were a ton of tumbleweeds piled up against fences. And, you know, nothing's done. So they, that, that neighborhood doesn't do anything about it. So then most of the next neighborhood, most of the next neighborhood, pretty soon, they're as high as the privacy fences. So it'd be nice, um, once they hit a, a niche where they, they don't end up blowing away, they just keep piling up because they're in, in a V or, you know, in a area that they just contains them. You know, this should be cleaned up once in a while. And I'd like to see, I'd like to see something to reduce the amount of tumbleweeds. And, you know, if those weeds got mowed during the year, then they wouldn't be blowing around in the, in the winter and piling up against fences. So I think again, it's the large property owners that need to maintain, um, cutting those weeds at a regular basis. So we don't end up with mature tumbleweeds that are negatively impacting the community in the wintertime.
Let us, let us look at that and bring you something back, the way to deal with it.
If that's the council's desire, that's just my personal opinion.
Yes.
So I don't know what the right answer here is, but kind of like a green waste day. I think one of the biggest issues I see in my neighborhood is they suck to throw away in your trash can because you put them in your trash can. Put like a heavy bag on top of them. They stay in that trash can.
Yeah, they don't come out.
For a long time until you, until you get them out yourself. And so I think part of that is like, okay, there's one in my yard. Hopefully it blows away. Because I don't want to put that in my trash can, you know? So it's, if you have a way to dispose of it besides your blue bin trash can, you know, then, uh, it might be better. So I don't know if there's a way, you know, obviously with yard waste, it's a little easier when you can work with A1 Organics, um, to have a place to put it, but it's like, let's have a city bonfire or something like that.
Composting, yes, composting.
That's why I said everyone organics.
Big difference.
All right, thank you. We'll, we'll investigate that.
Okay. Yeah, I have one more thing. So, yeah, my concern is the, the fact that they grow and, and they get to the point where they're going to seed or produce seed. And then they break off and blow around and then the seeds are all over and then we've got more weed problems the next, the next year. So is there some way that we could put together some kind of schedule for people to, to meet?
Uh, we'll, we'll, we'll investigate it. I'm not sure. I mean, I don't want to use this excuse, but I'd never seen a tumbleweed until two years ago when I drove out west to come here. They don't, they don't happen in Alabama. So, um, that's one I hadn't figured out how to deal with. We'll, we'll investigate.
All west.
Yeah, we'll, we'll investigate it. All right, all right, Tricia. Um, so we want to move into rental registration. Um, and this is just a quick update. Uh, talk about the impacts, uh, various regulatory options. Uh, and then opportunities that we might have to change the code to regulate and do some research. So as you know, this was something that has been brought to us, uh, by the, uh, the, our residents of some of our affordable housing projects. And so, um, we were asked to, to bring this back. If you remember, this first started coming up during my tenure when Village Crest residents came, approached to their concerns. Uh, the next day, our code enforcement housing authority reached out to those residents that spoke and those that had signed up but did not speak. A lot of them wouldn't even allow us to inspect because of really, really, um, concerns they had about who we were, what we might be doing. Uh, go ahead. And so the reasons that we heard were lack of trust, fear of retaliation, language barriers and access issues. That's important, I think, because that's one of the beauties of having a real registration program. It takes the onus off of that individual resident who doesn't, you know, who doesn't have to call us. We're regularly scheduled to go. I just, I threw this slide in here to show you, one of those that we were able to do, this one was at Village Crest recently, uh, that we, we just did, we got a complaint. These are the violations that we found when our inspector went in, violations of code. Um, it's obvious to me their problems are real, but, uh, they had, you know, they had problems in the, with cockroaches. Kitchen disposal, uh, didn't function. Clothes wash, the washing machine didn't function. Uh, floors, uh, appeared to have, uh, water infiltration and deflection. They were, they were not, you know, we, we were really concerned about their ability to support the people or the bathtub that was in there. So, um, I have to say that Village Crest was notified and then they have corrected these violations. But again, when we're hearing from the residents, we're hearing, seeing issues there. Um, how would we might deal with this? Again, we want to do research and look at a possible ordinance. We want to make sure it complies with Colorado law. There are other states that have, uh, real registration programs, but they're not Colorado cities. There are Colorado cities. So we want to, we want to look at that. We want to look at, um, how much it costs to administer the program, the registration, the licensing, what are our costs to inspect, how much staffing, or do we put it out to a third party? What a fair cost of a license might be or registration, and then how we market it and communicate it. It's, it's easy to adopt the ordinance, but, but getting the, the, the things in place to be able to enforce it are, are critical. Uh, and what we would like to do is do some research, again, review other Colorado communities codes. We've already started doing this. Want to meet with the United for a New Economy folks because they've been doing research just to make sure that we've got them at the table and other organizations that would find them, determine the cost to enforce. Uh, and then to explore whether it's in-house employees or contract services that we would use. If, just as a, for instance, if we do, say, uh, once every three years, so we put, we do a third at, at one time, we're talking four to six bodies to have to do those inspections because we've got between forty-five hundred and five thousand rental units in the community that would have to be inspected, a third of those every year. And if you look at a normal workload for an inspector and then the administrative process to keep up with all of it. Um, Denver's just implemented this. So we've got an example. We can look to see how many they're doing, what they're doing. So anyway, the intent tonight was to say, you asked us to look at this at your last meeting, ask us to come back by, uh, within, uh, a couple of months, through three, three or four months with a recommendation. And so we're going, we're just giving you an update saying that's what we're working on, uh, moving forward. Yes, sir.
Yeah, and you know, when you're looking at other cities, they're very different. Like Aurora, for instance, they find the resident, if it's a resident cause issue. So I find the landlord at the landlord issue. So their, um, program is a lot different than Denver's, for instance. Denver, you know, they use, um, private inspectors. So, you know, the landlord has to hire someone to come and do the inspection and their inspection, they don't even go into all the units sometimes. They just go and make sure that there's like hot running water and furnace works and then they're off to the next one. hot running water and furnace works and then they're off to the next one. So.
I live in Denver. They just started. They did my unit about six weeks ago. Now, I got an email that said we're doing twenty-five percent of the units in the building and IU were randomly selected. But yeah, there's all kinds of ways. That's what we want to bring you back options for how we do it, how we can do it. We want to make sure what we want to do is legal in Colorado first, because again, there are different ways to do it. But, you know, let y'all help us make those decisions about, do we, do we use our own staff? Or do we do like Denver and let the, you know, certify some people that, that can be used and let the property owner do that and furnish us reports. They're just, you know, do we do it, you know, once every three years? Do we do it once every four years? I know there are financial implications. We want to bring you all that back with, you know, and my hope is by the end of February, we'll, we'll be able to come back to you with some pretty solid recommendations.
I think it was, it would be a really wonderful thing to do and for the reasons that you, that you outlined. Because our special population and some who are fearful about speaking out. It would, as you point out, save them from retaliation. And that's what's really important. In addition to making certain that these, all of these units and houses, because there's many little teensy weensy houses too, meet safety and health standards in the community as well. So it's probably long overdue. So this is great. Thank you very much for working on it.
Okay. The next part of this, again, is this really kind of the traditional My C Three and what we're going to be doing with it. One thing we heard, I heard loud and clear from you is that you want to balance enforcement when this was discussed before with public properties, non-residential and residential. Didn't want all the burden falling on our residents. We wanted to spread the love and make sure we were getting good compliance with, with everybody. Couple of things we want to keep doing, we want to keep Commerce City Clean Day, really blow that up and get our, get businesses to help us and get a good cleanup in the spring, May or June. We thought that it might be good to do a yard of the quarter and maybe recognize one in each ward. Because, you know, not everybody is organized, not everybody has a true HOA. It would give people to be able to nominate and just promote some pride in, in, uh, in their community. We've got the tool trailer, those are the photographs you see there, and we want to really promote it. It's just, you know, people can come check out the tools and borrow them to do work. And I think that's, that's something that Public Works put in place this summer. Now, they've taken it to concerts and shown it, but we want to put more promotion out there and get people to use it.
When did, when did we get the truck? I saw it at the concerts and I wasn't aware that a truck was going to be part of the My C Three program.
I mean, the trailer with the.
Trailer.
Yes, ma'am. When we came and requested funding for the initial phases of the My C Three, that was one of the.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
I'm sorry. And, and under the initial phasing of the My C Three program, we had asked for funding for, to start some of these programs like the, uh, the Community Wide Cleanup, the quarterly award. We also had funding in place requesting for the tool trail and to set that up. So council actually approved the funding for that last late spring, early summer. And then we bought the trailers and we built them out.
Okay, I don't remember that at all. How was the success of it? Did people borrow tools from it? Did it do what it was supposed to do?
It started to show promise as we progressed through the year. But I think having additional publicity to promote it like we did during the concert series helps get that information out there. So there was, there's a process that the, the members of the community need to go through to actually not rent because it's rent, it's free, but to actually take out either the pieces of equipment or the equipment truck as a whole. So that process is, is still under development. We had a prototype process that we used with some elements of the community that worked well. And I think the community development people are planning to build on that so that we get more use out of that trailer and the tools in it. We had a provision, hopefully eventually, to build that out into two trailers. Uh, once we get the workload, if you will, get the participation from the community. But right now we have one that's totally built out. But we have a second, uh, we have a second trailer, if and when that, that opportunity may come. And we, we get the usage that we anticipate once the program gets fully developed and the community gets fully involved.
And what about private? So I had a constituent who was contacting me about issues regarding a lack of cleanup at particular business. And what is our authority to ask them to clean, clean up their trash on sidewalks and so forth?
The same as it is for the residents. And that's what we, we're trying to do with the concentration though, to make sure we're, we're gaining the business compliance also. We're going to be doing, uh, some here somewhere, but we're going to be doing knock and talks to the businesses. Knock on the door and say, hey, you know, we're here to talk to you about this, you know, we've constantly got a problem. Would you help us out? Just to try to create a relationship, but we still got the, the power to cite and, and require compliance.
And would it be community development who goes or would it be, and would it be one of your?
Code enforcement.
Code enforcement?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So I know I submitted that one. I'll have, I don't recall the outcome on that, whether they actually did go.
If it got into planner, we, we worked it. I'm not, you know, we can check. Tricia can follow up for you. Let her know when we get done where, where it was. One of the other things we want to do, oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, go ahead.
We want to, we want to provide signs to assist with trespassing, dumping and illegal parking. As you know, we've got a lot of areas where people are pulling an RV over and just parking, uh, living there. Uh, trespassing with, with transit camps and all. And we, we saw an example from another community where rather than just go and could deal with them, hand them out, some no trespassing signs, put these up. And then we've got better ways to enforce. So trying to get some of that out in the community to assist, we're, we're looking at doing, uh, and doing that. I'll look, exploring adding additional signs along public roads to prohibit overnight parking where we're having the problem. So hopefully that'll, that'll help with that. We want to bring you a shopping cart ordinance back. An ordinance that would do several things, but one, it would hold the business owners responsible for keeping the shopping carts on their own property. Uh, it would require identification so that when we find one, we know who it belongs to. Some of them are identified, some of them are not. Uh, and it requires removal and enforcement provisions, uh, consistent with the law of how we can get rid of things. But the way that, you know, the model ordinance that we've looked at either requires the business to put up signs to see if that'll work. If you're not removing from here, um, put up, uh, put the electronic devices on them that will lock the wheels when they go off their property. But then also to get responsible, you go look for them. I mean, it's, it's a heck of a problem in the core city. We're having, you know, in time we ride down the road, you know, you know, particularly down Sixtieth, you can see half a dozen of them. And people just take the stuff and leave them out on the sidewalk abandoned. So. And then we, we go where the code is now, we cite that private property owner who doesn't have anything to do with it. And they don't, they're not happy with us because where the code reads, it's their responsibility to get rid of it. And so, uh, we want to change that to make it more clear and, and, and hold the businesses more responsible for them. Uh, we're looking on re, uh, reorganizing the code enforcement division to really concentrate on areas of greatest need. Uh, one of the things that we've been trying to push is, uh, not unique to our code enforcement, everyone I've ever managed, we've had this issue with. But you tell them that there's an address somewhere to go check out a violation, they ride with blinders and go there and, and go to that place. They may pass ten others. And we're trying to instill the culture that as you go, look for every violation as you're out there and see it. You would think that second, you know, that ought to be normal, but it's, it's not. It's something that we're, we're having to really try to teach and build into the, uh, our requirements of them. Uh, we want to put more emphasis on building code issues and zoning. Uh, so like these, these inspections at Village Crest, we have to use our building official now because he's the only person certified with the property maintenance code. And we're going to get more of our inspectors where they can do double duty and we can get more inspections when we get those complaints. And then we get a lot of complaints about zoning, about businesses being in residential areas or doing things they're not supposed to be. We want to get, uh, one of our new zoning, one of our new code enforcement positions to be trained and understand zoning enforcement so they can, they can help do that. And I talked about the knocking talk. Yes, ma'am.
Second question about accessibility. How is this? Is, is obviously mobile, so when you do, you take it to a neighborhood and how are people supposed to know that it's there? Also, if they don't have appropriate transportation to transport the equipment to their place, how do these, those people get serviced?
Since we just are taking it over, we're still trying to work out the details of that, but as Joe said, it's available to take the whole trailer if they want it. And it may be that, yeah, again, we're going to have to figure this out, but, uh, it may be that we throw it in the back of a truck and take it to them to use. Uh, they can come get it, but yeah, a lot of people won't have the wherewithal.
Right, because I see like several lawnmowers in the, in the.
Particularly in the areas that where people might best borrow. We've got to work out those details. We, we, we agree with you.
The intent of the program was so if there, there were individual pieces of equipment were available for checkout, they can either be checked out, uh, at the location where the trailer is stored. Or if, if the inventory was approved, they could be delivered to that location. Also, if the request was for the whole trailer, then the trailer would be towed to that location. And then the equipment would be available for the, for the users.
So if you were taking the whole trailer someplace with, that would be so whole neighborhood, you could use it at the same.
Correct. That would be for larger scale projects, community or neighborhood projects.
So if everybody wanted to mow their lawn the same day and it was in the same neighborhood, then you would take the.
If it was a community-based project, yes, the trailer would support those type of activities.
Okay. So I just think we really need to iron out those keys to figure out how to make this really accessible and for people to be aware of it. I really want to commend you on the, uh, the logo and, uh, just the branding on this. It, it looks great. Logo is awesome, rooted in community, love that. So that looks fantastic. And we just have to, to figure out the rest of it to make it, so this is really viable.
Yes, ma'am. And we've been working with, uh, community relations to help that advertising effort for that. And as Mr. Tolbert mentioned, they're going to pick up where we left off and work with, uh, the relations department to make sure that work gets out.
Okay.
Thank you.
Blue and lonely so we can get you all to your U R A. Uh, one of the things we want, we talked about doing in your, uh, platform. If we're going to have a team from police, community wellbeing, code enforcement, public works, and go out and actually hit different areas and walk them and, and, and get out and talk. The police chief actually suggested this from another location. Tricia took the name and he called it off of there, but he called it Wolfpack. And I think that's a little scary, but we're going to call it something. And, uh, but anyway, it'd be an idea for an interdisciplinary team to go throughout and really work on these issues. Uh, probably first priority will be on the industrial areas that have a higher probability of the transient camps or other kind of problematic locations. Another thing we're going to do is reduce our basic compliance downtime down from twenty-one to fourteen. Somehow it crept up to twenty-one and with a lot of these violations, by the time you get to twenty-one days, it's a real mess to start it. And then again, as I mentioned, we're going to reorganize the abatement process, uh, to make sure that we better manage. We will have a request on your, uh, uh, January ninth agenda. Uh, Public Works have a hot shot truck to quickly remove items that are dumped on public property, in particular including sidewalks. We get a lot of calls from you all now about somebody's dumped a sofa or a mattress or something and it's on the public sidewalk. Now, right now our code says we've got to cite the adjacent property owner. That property owner may be, have no clue it's back there. The longer it stays, the bigger mess it gets. We want to be able to pretty much instantaneously get through those, get out, rid of those things. So that'll be one of their primary jobs. So that'll be coming back. That's a January ninth meeting. Uh, transient camp cleanup. We are drafting a policy as we were required to do to look at camps, public parks, private property, vehicles that are on the road, public city properties, not parks, C dot railroad and RTD properties. All of them have a different set of issues and so we're working, we've got to, go ahead, Tricia. We've got a, um, again, a cross-departmental team that's working on how best to do this. We're about three quarters finished with it. Uh, but we want to look at, uh, any camp activity that's not authorized by city department. Uh, private provides procedure for removal of these camps, including the minimum notice periods. Uh, and, uh, the time they have to evacuate. Uh, and then we want to make sure it outlines who exactly is responsible and how we clean it up. And then the procedure to be used, uh, to remediate another authorized camp. Uh, and I see, you know, if you remember when you adopted the urban camping ban, one of the key facts to implement it was having this policy in place. So we're, we're working to get that done. Uh, currently we're using Public Works contracts to clean up the public areas. We don't have a, uh, budget for private property. One of the things Aurora's done that I like is if, if somebody is a, in a residence or a small business gets an encampment on their property and then we cite them, they've got to go out and find somebody to remove it, somebody to, a place to dump it to take care of the things that have to be stored for a while. And, uh, it's just really beyond some of the, particularly some of the small businesses and residential to do. We'd like again to provide some money for a contractor that we could use for private property cleanup. And we can do it one of two ways. You know, if, if we do it, we can get, we would have to get their permission, you know, and get the right to enter. Uh, we can either ask them to pay for it, Aurora does that, and we're just doing the convenience side of it. Or if you felt like it was a burden on the small business or small residents, we could do a cost share. Uh, we don't have to know that tonight, but we, we, uh, we think that's something that's appropriate. Again, apparently Aurora's been doing it very successfully, but they charge the complete cost to the property owner. But at least it gives the property owner a mechanism to do it, which, you know, we find is, is not always easy to find that contractor that'll do it. These things cost five thousand plus, depending on the size of the encampment, to properly eliminate, store the things we have to store because we can't, you know, any, any property value we have to keep for a period of time so they can come get it if they want to. So, um, then that's something we want to bring back to you. We want to complete our agreement with C dot that, uh, they've offered that they will pay us to clean up encampments on C dot property so that we don't have to wait on them, that we can take the initiative. Uh, and the attorney's office has been evaluating that and, uh, think that would be something good. Uh, and then the one that's really kind of got us stumped is how we manage, uh, the transient living in RVs and campers that are on the right of way and on private parks where they're living in. Because if we go to a location and we tell them to move, well, they move from there and all they do is go six or eight blocks away and they park again. So we're something that Jason has asked us to, to do more research on and come back with, um, with a recommendation there. Because that one's, that one is, is proven to be a difficult one to deal with. The other thing is, other piece of this is we want to start taking looks at how we can improve the physical appearance of the community. Uh, one of the, uh, a couple of first things we would like to do, uh, we'd like to, uh, develop a weight finding program, uh, get somebody to design the signage, help us figure out where things would go uh, that we could build for the twenty-four budget to actually do the implementation of. But signs that not only say welcome to Commerce City, so you know where you are, but direct you to specific places. And, uh, many communities have done these large scale and, uh, uh, they really change the appearance and the, and the feelings about a community when you can know where you are and all. The other is we want to begin the preparation of a corridor plan, uh, for Highway Two to, uh, include, improve streetscape, that's management signage, everything that we can do to improve that. Uh, and we, it's, it's good timing. Dr. Kog is entertaining proposals this week where we might be able to get federal assistance to do the first phase, the conceptual piece that we could then implement. Uh, we think Highway Two fits perfectly into their criteria and we'll be submitting that to, to see if they would fund it. But this is something that will take us a while, I mean, to go through, but it's a first start at taking one of our major corridors and really trying to, uh, dress it up. Again, one of the things I need to put in is look at land use. Is it land use appropriate? Does it support what we need there? So those are things that we, uh, we'd like to see happen. Uh, actions needed by the council. We, we'd like to schedule a special meeting on January ninth to look at the, uh, increase in Public Works budget, uh, for the weeds management and the hot shot truck. To look at the uh increase in public works budget uh for the weeds management and the hot shot truck. A increase in C D to assist with removal of transient camps. Uh. See, you know, get your blessing to move forward in weight finding and corridor study. Uh, making sure that you don't have any concerns about the operational uh changes uh to improve our enforcement and. Uh, move forward with preparing the rental registration program to bring back to you. So, again, we're wrapping all that under my C three, trying to make it a, you know, a program that looks at how we better. Improve the community, the image of the community and and the lives of our citizens and kind of bringing it all to to one program. If you'd like to answer any more questions?
I uh, I just want to go back to the nine hundred thousand plus for uh two more. We need to make it.
Well. A minimum of two, probably more, but also to do the uh, the open space restoration. I think there's another piece of that that's been talked about but never funded is a large chunk of that.
Okay, yeah, that would be appreciated to have justification for it, because at this moment we have five done and it. Has been working well, so to now say we're gonna add two more and that's nine hundred thousand dollars and, you know, another nine hundred thousand dollars is. Something that I would want to see the justification for.
I think if y'all think it's working well, that will greatly influence what comes back to you, but we'll, I I think Joe will have those, all that information when it comes back.
On the the rental registration program, you know, it's uh. Sounds like it's something we're gonna have to like build staff for and everything else. Is there a option that you can present us that helps us phase that, like, I would love. Uh, and I'm completely spitballing an idea, but like any any property that's using. You know, our connection to get a tax rebate or a tax break, like uh, Lytech Housing or anything like that, that's who we start with first and making sure that. Um, we hold them accountable and then we'll build a program out for the whole city, you know, in phase two and three, whatever.
Yeah, well, we'll look at those options, I think that. You know, the ordinances I've seen, where they're doing that, you have to treat all real properties the same, so I'm not sure we can single out a class, but we can. We can, there are creative ways to do that.
Sure. I just figured if you have to have. Six staff members, you're gonna probably need to build. Um, one or two staff, build a program, then hire those other people on, it takes time, so if you can phase it.
Uh, you know, that's that's something great to look at, because it also shows we have a problem.
Other comments, questions? Let me start by saying, thank you very much, appreciate your time, appreciate this presentation, thank you ma'am for your time and presentation this evening. Working improvement over what's been done in the past, and I greatly appreciate it and look forward to seeing implementation on a lot of these items. So we continue to try to improve the appearance of the city, so thank you, thanks to everybody and staff for helping with this. Uh, your meeting is gonna start in three minutes, we're gonna take a break and let everybody.
Okay, you are good to go.
I am gonna call the U R A meeting and order an S secretary to call the role.
Chair Guzman.
Present.
Vice Chair Alan Thomas. Commissioner Madera.
Here.
Commissioner Noble.
Here.
Commissioner Hurst.
There.
Commissioner Ford.
There.
Commissioner Douglas.
Here.
Commissioner Boucher. Commissioner Meshuggah. Commissioner Lobato.
Here.
Commissioner Tedesco. Chair Guzman, you have a form.
Thank you, looking for a motion, second, excuse the members not present. Uh, Commissioner Hurst. Commissioner Noble. Have a motion in a second to excuse the members not present, is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Alright.
Any opposed? Very unanimously. Alright, next up, would like to welcome Renee Lovato to the Board of Commissioners of the Urban Renewal Authority of the City of Commerce City, Colorado. Welcome. Great, looking for a motion, second to approve the minutes? Commissioner Hurst, Commissioner Madera.
Second.
Have a motion, second to approve the minutes, is there any discussion? Sign our request for discussion to a voice vote, all those in favor?
Alright.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next up, we're gonna go to presentations, invite Bill Aiken, Director of the Urban Renewal Authority. Director of Urban Renewal forward to give the presentation on the Sand Creek Business Area.
Thank you, Chairman, and members of the C C U R A. While we're getting the uh screen of the presentation, I quick want to introduce a couple of folks who are instrumental to getting us where we're at tonight. Um, you know Caitlin Quander, the representative, the legal counsel for the C C U R A. Uh, on the Zoom call, we have Bill Cunningham and Ann Ricker from Ricker Cunningham, who did the U R A plan for Sand Creek for us. As well as helped during the negotiations uh with the developer. And then representing the developer tonight, we have Mark Fumpkins in person, and then on the call, we have. Uh, Joe Trinkle and Lynx Chan, who uh all represent the developer for Sand Creek. So what we'd like to do tonight is give a brief update on where we're at with the Triangle Logistics Center. Uh, obviously located, for those of you that that haven't been part of this presentation in the past, it's located just north of forty eighth, just south of fifty second. And uh Ivy Street runs right through the middle of it. Existing condition is it's a landfill that was developed in the early nineteen thirties and it served as a landfill for the Sand Creek Business Area. Uh, until about the nineteen eighties, when it was abandoned, in the nineteen nineties, the federal government identified it as a superfund site due to its contaminants and it was cleaned up. What you'll notice is we have about nine thousand linear feet of right of way in this area, uh having an abandoned area that sixty eight acres. Uh, has really caused a lot of what might be known as an attractive nuisance with some camping and dumping in the area. Um, hopeful that if this project gets approved, that having eyes in the area will really help prevent that sort of attractive nuisance that happens in areas that are abandoned. This is the existing condition, again, it's an undeveloped sixty eight track acre tract of land. The developer intends to develop it with approximately eight hundred and forty thousand square feet of uh Class A light industrial flex warehouse space. Went through a zoning earlier this year approved by city council, and the last item for the developer's start work is to uh to work to get a U R A uh agreement done. So in twenty twenty, the developer approached the city about uh redeveloping the landfill. In twenty twenty one, the developer made at least two presentations to the city council about what might be necessary to do that. And uh twenty twenty one, the city approved a metro district for this particular project. In twenty twenty two, staff's spent a significant amount of time negotiating with the different taxing authorities to figure out what sort of property tax levy or uh. Or sort of mill rate would be able to be pledged back to this development to see it redeveloped. Seventy nine percent of all uh. Levy in the city, in the county, and other taxing authorities combined, about seventy nine percent of that are pledged back to the U R A to help facilitate this project. Over a twenty five year period, that's anticipated to be about forty six million dollars. Uh, and then on October tenth, the C C U R A staff met with the C C U R A and received a directive. To to negotiate a deal with the developer that meets the goals and objectives of the plan. And is also fair, helps clear the hurdles, uh reduce risk for the developer. And allows the U R A to have a revenue coming in that we could use then to support other redevelopment. Or improvements of rights of way infrastructure and the rational nexus of that project. So we're here to today to present a deal that has five potential revenue streams. Uh, this is a deal that the C C U R A staff would very harden the developer to ensure that. As much revenue as possible could flow back to the U R A for additional projects outside of this one. There are a a couple of them, I'll go over each of these in detail. So the first one is that the developer is agreed uh agreed to reimburse the U R A a hundred thousand dollars to help with the cost. Of the U R A plan to Ricker Cunningham, as well as attorney's fees during the negotiations. Uh, that there would be an annual administrative fee of one percent of the tax that's generated from this project, so the way to think about this with all these revenue sources. Is there only revenues generated from this project, so it's a share in the developer's risk as far as when the developer makes money, the U R A makes money. Uh, it does not affect any properties or values outside of the boundary of this one property. So the one percent administration fee is anticipated to be about twenty five thousand dollars a year for twenty five years. The annual sales tax would be split between the C C U R A and the developer. Come out to about seventy five thousand dollars per year that the C C U R A would get in the sales taxes. That the residual TIF revenues, so the best way to think about that. Is that for the first couple of years, the developer's gonna have to put a lot of their revenues generated from the project in the metro district. To pay off the bonds that they'll secure for the construction. Around twenty thirty, when those bonds are paid off, there'll be a residual, so the residual is essentially the revenues over the expenses. We anticipate those to start in about twenty thirty, it would last from twenty thirty up to twenty forty seven. And uh, over that period of time, it'd generate about twelve to fourteen million dollars, so it's easy to think spread out over fifteen years. About three to four hundred thousand dollars a year coming back to the C C U R A. And then the participating interest clause is a clause where basically. Um, the developer intends to build this project, have it stabilized and sell it, that's all C A Ventures does, they are not. Long term holders of any assets they build, they anticipate that to be somewhere around twenty twenty five or twenty twenty six. When they sell the project, they anticipate to, based on our share of TIF revenues, that um. The the U R A's share in that revenue would be about two point eight million dollars. Uh, so we would get a check at closing for the two point eight billion, but if they wanted to purchase that early, there's a time value to money. So they could buy us out essentially at this rate right here, which means that. If they wanted to next January, January of twenty twenty four, they could agree to pay us one point nine seven three million dollars and they would release that obligation. So it's kind of a risk reward, the longer they wait, the more they pay, uh but that's because to pay us upfront would be a higher risk on their end. Um, outside of the C C U R A, this deal also impacts just about every other taxing entity uh that that collects a a mill levy in Commerce City. So what I want to point out here is that there are, uh, these are the taxing entities that would receive any sort of levy from this project. This is what they've dedicated to the project right here, so some have dedicated a hundred percent, others all the way down to uh fifty percent, but generally speaking, seventy nine percent overall. So as of right now, if nothing happens, this is what each of the taxing entities will collect per year, about nine thousand dollars combined. City of Commerce City, about three hundred and twenty eight dollars, Adams fourteen, about three thousand nine hundred dollars. Over the period of the next twenty four years, which is the life of the TIF, about two point uh two hundred thousand dollars in totality. Since there is a mill levy that was still retained and not pledged to U R A from most of the taxing entities. With the uh increased value from a hundred and two mil, a hundred and two thousand to thirteen point five million. This is what they would start receiving if the deal was done and if the project was built. So you'd have the city instead of collecting three hundred dollars, we get two thousand. Most notable is probably gonna be Adams fourteen, they go from about three thousand nine hundred bucks to a hundred and twenty eight thousand dollars per year. Uh, over a twenty four year period, that that's what they would collect, so instead of the two hundred thousand, the taxing entities get about six point three million. And then when the plan expires in twenty forty seven, the project's worth two million or two hundred million dollars. That's the new uh annual valuation. Uh, in addition to that, Commerce City did not pledge the use tax, so all of the use tax would be retained. By the City of Commerce City, it's anticipated to be just over two million dollars, uh that would occur during construction of the project. That uh, there's the two K revenues, so that between three point five and four point five percent of our sales tax can't be pledged back to these projects. So over twenty four years, it's anticipated that the city would collect just under a million dollars in the sales tax. And then the developers also agreed to do about three point eight million dollars of public infrastructure work, including rebuilding Ivy Street sidewalks, curbs, gutters. Uh, repaving roadways in and around this project area. Um, outside of financial benefits, obviously, this project is uh an abandoned landfill, it's about ninety years old. And this is the first developer that I'm aware of that's approached the city about a potential redevelopment, so it cures the life of a hundred year old landfill. It accomplishes the goals and objectives that are identified in the U R A plan, as well as the comprehensive plan for the city. It contributes towards the idea of environmental protection and sustainability, and the idea that they're gonna have to go in. Export unsuitable dirt, spring in six hundred thousand cubic yards of good dirt, uh redo the entire methane system. The groundwater that's contaminated will be treated, there'll be a stormwater to reduce runoff, a stormwater pond and other features like that. That there's a ripple effect, when you think about a two hundred million dollar investment on a landfill in an industrial area. that there is generally a ripple effect over time where adjacent properties start to redevelop or get reinvested in. And then the potential relocation of existing businesses. If you have an existing business in this area, is it a property that is maybe a lawful non-conforming property that doesn't meet their needs? There's an opportunity for them to relocate to a new property and to see other redevelopment in the area. Ricker Cunningham ran some economic impact indicators based on this project. During construction, it's anticipated to employ approximately a hundred and fifty people. They're supposed to spend in the range of eight hundred thousand to a million dollars a year in the City of Commerce City as they're buying gas, buying food, other activities that they do in the city while they're working Monday through Saturday. That potential new annual sales that the city would expect during construction, receive approximately seventy-five thousand dollars a year in sales tax during construction. After the project is constructed and they start to lease it and stabilize it, we would expect it to employ about six hundred new people. We would anticipate that those individuals would spend about four million dollars a year in the City of Commerce City. Again, you need gasoline, you need food, you do shopping, entertainment. That's what they would spend. It would be anticipated that it would basically support about fifteen thousand square feet of new retail, having those new employers. And it would generate about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year in additional sales tax revenues. So staff is recommending that the Urban Renewal Authority direct the Urban Renewal Staff to create a agreement, a development agreement with the developer that would essentially incorporate the ideas that were presented, those five revenue streams that were presented earlier in this product. And if approved, that we would bring, or if directed to do so, we would bring it back to the CCURA board on February thirteenth for consideration to approve. If it does get approved, the project schedule would be that the developer is closing in March on the project. That they would start construction in April on the project, and it would take about two years to build the project. If you have any questions, staff is here to answer. We also have our third-party consultants, Ricker Cunningham, who did the economics on the deal, as well as members from the developers.
Thanks, sir. Appreciate that presentation. Very thorough and informative. Councilmember Douglas.
Yes, thank you. So it says potential annual spending from employees. Where would that money be spent? Would that be in Commerce City anticipated?
That's what is anticipated. So Ricker Cunningham did an analysis on what a typical worker in this sort of workplace, what they would spend, where they would go to lunch, where they would go shopping, gas stations and the like.
Okay, because it's, it's only close to the Denver border there. So I'm wondering why you think that would come back into Commerce City specifically?
Hey, Bill and Anke, are you, can you guys hear?
Yes, I can answer that question. I believe that the question was the spending that is occurring from both the employees who are there during construction through the build-out of the project, as well as the permanent employees who are going to be working there over the long term. What we usually do in situations like this is calculate what is the, as Bill described, how do employees spend their money when they're at work? You know, where do they spend money for lunch? Where do they, you know, spend retail purchases? And then we usually apply a percentage to how many of those actual expenditures are going to occur essentially within your city limits. Okay, so, you know, certainly there's going to be spending that may occur in Denver, because you're right across the street. There may be expenditures from those employees that are spent outside of Commerce City. But essentially, these numbers have been adjusted to reflect local Commerce City spending, local Commerce City, retail supported by that spending. And finally, what the annual sales tax revenues to the city that could accrue from those, from that employee's spending.
So did you look at specific locations in making this analysis of where that spending would be taking place?
No, it really doesn't get down to a site-specific thing, because, you know, what we know, we know generally and have statistics to back it up. How much, excuse me, how much retail spending, restaurant spending that, that come from employees of, you know, a project like this, a large industrial project. But it does not, you know, get down to the seven eleven on the corner, or, you know, a particular restaurant. We look at where does that spending go and how much of that can be captured within your city limits?
And what kind of time period are you looking at? Is this up until the twenty, year twenty forty-seven?
Well, these, the construction numbers, those numbers are only going to incur, occur during the construction of the project. So as Bill said, they, they're going to start construction spring of next year. It'll probably take them a couple of years to complete the project. So that construction employment, those numbers really are going to occur annually for a couple of years. Maybe three years if the construction period extends beyond that. The permanent employment numbers, the ones on the top half of the chart, those will occur as long as, you know, as long as there are businesses in that industrial park on an annual basis into the future. So those, those numbers could go well beyond twenty forty-seven.
I also have a question about the name of the Business Center, Sand Creek. Did you take into consideration the fact that it's that indigenous, the indigenous population might find that a bit offensive? Just because of the reference to the Sand Creek massacre. And yes, that happened in Southern Colorado. However, the name Sand Creek, we did receive a letter from one of our constituents regarding their concern for that. Did you take that into consideration in naming it? I don't know if it's too late, but.
I think I can answer that one. So Sand Creek Business Park is, has been the name of that area traditionally for decades and decades. This particular project's name will be the Triangle Logistics Park.
Wonderful.
So Sand Creek is, has been for decades, the name of the larger area.
So we can refer to it then as the Triangle.
Triangle Logistics Park is the name of this actual project.
I like that much better. Okay, thank you.
But the landfill's been named Sand Creek landfill since nineteen thirty.
Right. This is an opportunity to change that. So, thank you. Appreciate that.
Or member.
My primary reservation would, great presentation, by the way. Yes, there's lots of benefits, and I am very happy about that. My primary reservation is the project not having to pay the one percent of the two K bonds.
So the way that the sales tax works is all the sales taxes are remitted back to the city. And then one percent will stay with the city. They, that's the two K, that's the million dollars in revenue. And then of the three and a half percent, the developer and the URA would split that in half. So they, they do pay. So the one percent is non-negotiable. It always goes to the city.
I no longer have a reservation.
So the city would basically generate about a million dollars in two K revenues off the project.
Thank you.
Any other questions for any board members? Alright, any objection to the URA staff negotiating with this development agreement and bringing it back to us on February thirteenth? None. Go forth and prosper.
Thank you very much.
We're going to move on to resolution URA twenty twenty-two dash twenty-one. It is a second amendment to the IGA loaning funds. Do any board members have any questions for staff? Send my promotion a second to adopt resolution URA twenty twenty-two dash twenty-one. Commissioner Hurst, Commissioner Madera. Have a motion in a second to adopt resolution URA twenty twenty-two dash twenty-one. Is there any discussion? No request for discussion to a voice vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. That is all the business we have for the Urban Renewal Authority this evening. Thank you very much for your attendance and for your participation and for watching. We will now adjourn back to the city council study session.
Thank you very much.
Alright, Mayor Mayor City Council Study Session. Invite Jason Rogers forward to give the presentations. Back to basics, vision.
Thank you. Today I have my Center for Innovation team here with this time to take you all through the exercise that I really think about as a continuation of a larger conversation that I prioritize, ensure that we do two things here. One, make sure that we're getting the best service for our community. And then two, holding staff accountable for meeting expectations. For me, to be able to set clear expectations for staff, we need to make sure that we are all on the same page with when it counts. And when it comes down to the fundamentals and our long-term goals of our city council. So this is why we've kind of coined it as back to basics. You all know me in sports. I like the fundamentals. Better at fundamentals, the better that we can be able to demonstrate excellence as opposed to expiration. Ooh, there.
Number two, not number one.
Hey, you know what? Still better than the other three hundred and fifty-six schools out there. That being said, right, for Commerce City, we want to make sure that we're getting the fundamentals right. And we want to make sure that we understand the expectations that are set across various things that we need to focus on the how. But we need to understand the what. And it's that what that gives us those fundamentals to be able to go and meet those two objectives. So with that being said, I'm going to turn it over to Armando, I'm going to turn it over to Trenton, to kind of take us through what I hope to be continuing our conversation that we're going to have on that.
Alright, guys. Thank you. Mayor and council members, so he summed up a lot of it. So he did a lot of the agenda. So I am going to kind of go over the quick agenda in going back to the basics. So when we're going back to the basics, the Center of Innovation, we've been working with the city manager's office to ensure that we're setting, meeting, and communicating clear goals for our work plan and also through the strategic plan. And so Acting City Manager Rogers engages the Center for Innovation to facilitate a session largely to talk about the bigger conversation. How do we get people back to the basics? How do we get our staff back to the basic? So what we're going to be doing is today, we're going to be talking to, we're going to be talking about what are the basics? We have some definitions, some standardized definitions. We really want to hear from councils' expectations as far as what is going back to the basics. Also, we want to talk about understanding operations, projects, and people. I'll go into a little bit of a detail in regards to what that is, and also an idea of a methodology that we want to kind of incorporate and kind of run it through council. We believe based on the discussion we had with staff, I think it would really improve and overall innovate and move our, the city forward. And lastly, obviously, we do have some activities, but we also want to know what, you know, what does council need for us to really meet your expectations? What does staff need? What kind of, what guidelines, what tools do we need so that make sure that we're hitting your expectations? So I will talk a little bit, this is basic, and I understand it's basic, but I'd like to get everybody on the same page. And that starts with council and giving us direction and giving us their expectation. So we'll talk, we'll start off with the basic services. We have an activity, and what we're going to be doing is who is our customer? What are the basic services we provide to the community? But what I want to do is, what is going back to the basic is returning to the fundamental aspects of how the city delivers basic services, core competencies. And it's a joint venture of where we can work more effectively to provide excellent community service. So we will talk about the basic services, but we want to know what council's basics. What is going back to the basics and what is basic services to council? We also want to talk about core competencies, based on the discussion we had with Jason, going back to, you know, setting ambitious and realistic goals. Do we do, how do we do that? And how do we do it to your expectations? And then setting and meeting service levels. We all talk about service levels. But really, what are true service levels? And are they hitting council's expectation, the community's expectations? We went around different departments and everybody has service levels. But when were they developed? And how do we have the data to back up the service levels? And are they realistic? And then also the project in operations. I do really want to talk about this, but we're really going to bring this back on versus projects in operations. And I'll talk a little bit on the slide in regards to it. But it really is looking at, how can we differentiate between projects and operations? So what we did find when we did this session with staff is we have multiple projects, but nobody can define it. So what we really want to do is come back with some standardization on definitions. I have a couple that I put in there, and I'm open to your feedback, but I think if we can at least distinguish what are projects, for example, special city projects, operational projects, CIP projects, how can we define that better so we can all be on the same page and we can give that guidance to staff? I'm going quick. If you have questions, please interrupt me. So I do want to talk a little bit about why we're going to the, going back to the basics. And great organizations have the answers to the questions of what's our purpose? And also where are we going and why? Which, for us, it's an opportunity for the city to reestablish expectations based on city council mission and vision. I have the mission here. So obviously, what we do based on the mission is provide excellent public service and customer experiences. That is the what. That is direction from council. We post that on the website. The how, which is more of the city manager's duties, is by anticipating needs, embracing diversity, and building relationships to sustain a growing and vibrant community. That is the how. I did a little bit of research because I didn't know, and we believe that was originally in two thousand fourteen, fifteen is when that originally originated, the mission. It's been tweaked, but that was the last time it was tweaked. My understanding was they, they had a council retreat or a leadership retreat. That's kind of where it was developed. During two thousand fourteen, fifteen, we couldn't find any documentation, but that's where we believe it originated, is on the website. Another important thing is that we want to look at is the vision. The vision is to be a quality. The vision is to be a quality or a quality community for a lifetime through the relentless pursuit of excellence. That's ultimately our, our vision, where we want to go. So the example I gave is their starting point is the mission. If we can get in line with the mission from council, if that is truly the mission that we are aiming for, that's a starting point. That tells us what we need to do as an organization to get there. The vision is ultimately how we're going to get there and what is it going to look like? The city, what's the city going to look like? So those are two important key elements to make for us to go back to the basics and starting and reestablish where we want to be. So I gave you that if the city or if city council and staff align with the mission and vision, then cities, so council's expectations are met. Expectations for communicating progress and successes are set. Standardization of how we deliver our products and services. And then lastly is establish a roadmap for the future, creating a culture that looks forward and not in the rear's. We use the rear's as data. It doesn't drive our work. We need to look forward. We need to look five years, ten years. What is the city going to look like? What do we need to do to get there? And we'll talk a little bit about what we seen with workload and it does impact workload. So our first activity, I know it's late and we're going to try to run these about five minutes, hopefully more than ten each one. But I'm going to hand it over to Trenton to do the first activity. And when we establish this, the first activity is really, I really need your participation. It really drives us to get the data. We, we did this with staff and we want to take a look at both of those and make sure that we're in line. Where are we not in line? Bring that back to council so we can at least align with what your expectations are based on going back to the basics.
Good, Trenton. Excellent, thank you. I will, I'll say the same thing for a late at night meeting as I say for early meetings. I'm sorry, my energy does not match the time of day, but this is really exciting for me. You all have some sticky notes in front of you. And so what we're going to be doing is some collective brainstorming. The first thing we're going to be brainstorming are the basics, right? We're going to talk about two different things. We're going to talk about what those basics are. What are those core services, those targets that we provide to the community? And then we're going to talk about who our customers are. This gives us an understanding of not only the scope of what the basics mean, but also gives us an understanding of the scale of the effect that those have. This, oh, we did the similar activity with staff and they came up with a ginormous list of, of items. And that's really what we're trying to do is just stimulate some activity and get everyone on the same page here. So you have four different color sticky notes. We're going to put the pink salmon ones to the side right now. We're going to focus on our green, our blue and our orange. So on what we're going to put on our green ones are those basic services, right? So our example we came up with was roads, right? That's a, that basic infrastructure, right? That's what we're going to put on our green. Blue, you're going to put the customer, that primary customer, who are the people interacting or receiving those goods or services? And then finally, we're going to put orange. These are secondary customers, right? These are the people who are receiving benefits from what we're doing, but may not be the primary users or beneficiaries of the goods and services. So obviously a primary customer for our infrastructure, commuters, residents, right? People using the roads, right? But then a secondary customer, the businesses benefiting from people being able to use the roads to get to their businesses, right? So you can do it a couple of different ways. If you want to come stick them up anywhere on this sheet, please do if, if you'd rather rather raise your hand, we can come around and stick them up. So we're going to work to, to generate a list together. Any questions? Yes.
Is it one idea per sticky note?
Yes, ma'am. I, I always issue the challenge, may, may, need to get you more sticky notes if that's what, if that's what happens, that's okay. But yeah, one idea per sticky note.
I think so. Release the hounds.
I don't give a.
So can you, can you explain just a little bit more as like the examples of the.
Yeah, absolutely. So, so when we're talking about going back to the basics, what are those basic things? What are the basic things? So we public, right? We maintain the roads. We provide parts and wreck. That's right.
As no development.
As no much of. So. Look at that. Keep in mind, they don't have to be together. If you have a separate one, it's just a basic service and you, you don't have to follow the whole process. We've got a couple of good ones left here already. If you come up with the same one, that's fine. We'll do. But public safety just legitimately provide citizens are the primary beneficiaries of that. And then the businesses are secondary beneficiaries of that as well. Unreviewed time. Oh, I love that. We're working on that. Parts and wreck is a primary.
You promised in that, but I haven't seen anything.
Look me up on LinkedIn. I got some good pictures in there. Zone in and use codes for not development. So that would be one of our primary services. Perfect.
Parts and wreck somebody else.
Have you guys see something?
Why are the blues lumped with the oranges and the?
Because that's how, that's how other people have chosen to put them together. You don't have to.
What's wrong with you?
You can separate them. They were just put like that to eat them to you.
Supposed to be with the greens and then the blues.
I, 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 I promise we will spend some time consolidating.
Oh, well, I could report directions there.
I know. Uh-oh. It's the color. Hey, I'm actually excited. That's a lot, that's a big list you're coming up with. This is what happens when we, we co-generate lists. Thank you. You didn't want to help? Come on, that was good. That was a good outfit. Okay. What's next? Let's let everyone finish their ideas. About two minutes. Lots of time here. That's fine. Sir. Big list. Excellent, thank you.
Yes, you may.
A lot of good ideas. Got about a minute left. Move on.
What?
Yeah.
I'm only on the green.
Okay. Keep writing. Keep adding them. Excellent. I know people are still writing, so Armando. No worries. Put it up there. And Armando will keep coming around and collecting ideas as I start to read these off. But I just want to show you the ideas that the group has collectively generated here, right? So in terms of what the basics are for the city, we're talking about city planning, quality development. We're talking about weeds, a lot of economic development, attraction and retention of retail opportunities. Events that bring the community together, more retail development. Permitting time, we have plan review time. We have a couple of those, right? That's a big interaction point with the community. Snow removal, absolutely. Parts and wreck, a lot of parts and wreck, parts and wreck opportunities, right? On health, keeping the community safe, keeping the, keeping the air clean. Keeping the water clean, right? There's a lot of things, being accountable to the community. I love that. That's a great one to, to nature of life. Communication, communicating information transparency, correct? Collaboration with other levels of government, county, state, federal, absolutely. And then appearance, how our city looks. There's a lot of things that are just these core, the basic essence of the work that we do as a city. Now, are we not talking more? Or yes, we can always keep adding to, no worries. All right. When we're talking about our primary customers, right? We're talking about a lot of different people. The, the primary one, the citizens and residents, right? People that we're here to serve, that you, you all were elected to serve, that we're all, we're all joining together to serve, right? The business community, absolutely, is a primary customer, right? Business and developers, developers, education system. In, in, in community engagement as a primary customer. I actually really like that framing because that really treats it as something that we really need to hone in on and focus on. And then primary employers. I, I think that's also a great one to talk about when, especially when it comes to economic development. Now with our secondary customers, there's one on here in particular that I really enjoy, but we'll do that. And residents as secondary customers too, right? There's a lot of things that we do that the residents benefit from that we may not, they may not even see, right? If there's a growing tax base, they're going to see benefits from that, even if they're not participating directly, right? Then on non-resident businesses, absolutely. Other people outside of the city, right? We have a lot of, we have a lot of trans city commute, right? We have people coming in and going out, especially from the airport, right? The airport is also another secondary beneficiary of the work we. Businesses, absolutely. Other communities, businesses, and then pets as a, as a secondary customer. Absolutely, we're all here for the pets, right? So here, here's really what, what we want you to take away from this, right? This is something that seems really simple on its face. It's like dribbling a basketball, right? We, we think it's something that's super simple, but when you really start to get into it, there's a lot there, right? There's a lot of things that are the typical, you know, road maintenance, weeds, that sort of stuff. But then we're also talking about transparency as one of those basic things, right? These are, these are complex topics that, that we want to make sure we're all on the same page for. The next thing we're going to do, we can get rid of the rest of those colors. So you can use whichever color you want at this point. And we are going to talk about expectations. So I put a little, put a little target here and under one of your seats, there's a bow and arrow. No, I'm joking. I wish that would be. So we want to make sure we're hitting the target, right? So here is what I want you to think about when it comes to expectations. What would it look like when we provide those basic services? Well, what does that mean to you? So for example, for roads, right? That means roads without potholes. No car accidents, right? Those different things that really indicate, and this is where I want you to think really creatively and think really ambitiously, you know? We can talk about, oh, well, we want, you know, potholes filled in seventy-two hours, blah, blah, blah. But in a perfect situation, we want no potholes, right? That, that is, that is what we're working towards, right? So this one is a little, a little more elusive, but we're talking about what the, what are your expectations personally for meeting these objectives and serving these customers? So what I add to that is if we're meeting your expectation, what does it look like? And that's really what we want on here, you know? If we are truly meeting your expectations, what does it look like? So no potholes was the example that we want to use. But based on the basics that you added here, what does it look like if we meet your expectations?
Can I have my sticker back?
Which one? I mean, if you can.
I just wanted.
I'm really.
I'm ready. I know.
Which color?
Any, um, pink is what we did for you, but you can use any color. We don't have.
How long are we doing this for?
This will be another five minute one if possible. But always if you're, if you're generating a lot of ideas, then we have to stay longer. You have to listen to us drone on more.
Let me see.
We're, we're trying to be ambitious.
Realistic communications, right? You just have to turn off your computer.
Hey, look, we're, we're. I will not spit them all up together.
See that? Two more points.
I didn't realize I'd be hitting such a nerve using the basketball.
He's ignoring you.
That's, that's four to zero there, Mr. Virginia. I didn't say it. Did you hit, did you use glass? Of course. You know what? I like that fundamentals.
Fundamentals.
Glass, use the tools that I'm getting to you. If you weren't supposed to use it, it wouldn't be there, right? Very true. Very true. Spoken, spoken like a, spoken like a true bench run. And not all of us.
We're trying to facilitate a collaborative approach.
Not all of us have a broken territory. Not seven foot tall. You can't teach height, right? Sometimes you gotta use what you can.
This is a hard one. This is a, this is a difficult one, right? How do we know we're providing the basics? We're going to have two more minutes. One more minute. Set those final ideas down. Thank you.
Are your favorite one? Oh, you're bringing that one up.
Oh, you know.
So this is a reading the city staff as far as what they're doing wrong, right?
No, 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 no. We are very forward looking, right? This is, this isn't an ideal state when we're meeting everything that we need to do. So you can cross my name out. That's not.
Let's, let's, let's try to. City staff and what can we hit? Take my name off that list, please.
And with enforcement. Well, you can.
All right. We can keep adding. I'm going to start reading to not take up too much time here. But really what, what I want you thinking about this, right? There, there's different levels that people approach this, right? There's some really ambitious, probably like practically impossible sort of things, zero crime, that sort of stuff, right? But it really shows the level that we can really be thinking about in terms of how we can achieve what we're looking for. These sort of things are what we use to develop our key performance indicators, our measurable outcomes to know that we are meeting council's expectations. So let's start talking about a couple of these, right? Zero complaints for the community. I think we can stop there, right? All right. On other things, resiliency from staff, opportunity for staff, absolutely. See opportunities and possibilities in the community. No traffic fatalities, right? Planning with the future in mind in terms of creativity, creating the roadways, that sort of thing, right? Zero metro districts, zero crime, zero discrimination. Every citizen is treated fairly and equally, right? Well-maintained medians, well-maintained parks. Roads don't feel like a washboard. Absolutely, like we're, we're, we're thinking ambitiously, right? But we're also thinking on a practical level, what can we accomplish? On reporting on city council votes in the newsletter. Okay, absolutely. That's something that's, that's a tool that we can use. We'll talk about that here in a second. On a monthly list of projects to city council. A strong business community, smooth processes for permits. Balancing residential, industrial and natural spaces, right? Attractive place to live, a clean and beautiful city. Five-star restaurants. Yeah, we're, it's outside the box, right? Better relationships with CDOTs on the rail, then both railroads. On cultural programs at the cultural center. People show pride in their community. There was another one that everyone's selling their community, right? People want to be proud that they're from Commerce City. We serve the residents who are already here. Meeting monthly retail development and then obtain agenda a week in advance from city, the city staff for council, right? So we're starting, we're seeing the levels that we're thinking, right? So what I'm going to do is I'm going to pass it back to Armando. He's going to start talking about how we can translate this into action and, and where we're going from here.
You didn't read link.
One of my. Okay, which one?
Hold developers accountable to build, build a quality community for.
Hold developers accountable, absolutely. Hold developers accountable, absolutely. Any other ones?
Do you have a sticker board, or did they just not read it?
I just didn't read it, I, I just went in an illogical manner, so that's okay.
Zero traffic fatalities.
Yes, zero traffic fatalities, absolutely, that's okay.
Alright, so I really wanna talk about this idea that, uh, we developed. Uh, we, we facilitated, we facilitated a session with leadership in regards to, uh, kind of the workload, and how can we be more, um, successful in obtaining and aligning ourselves with, with council? So I do wanna talk a little bit about this, this concept. Um, so the concept would be is, we're calling it the seven twenty-ten rule. Ideally, what we would like to do is picture this as a department, so you're looking at the department, and within each department, what we discovered when we looked at, when we worked with leadership, was departments really have no function as far as breaking down our workload. Right now, currently, this idea would be is a seventy percent of our operations is day-to-day work, core processes, support processes, and management processes. And what currently we're doing right now is we're working with departments, uh, the Center for Innovation sent out a, a spreadsheet and a workbook, so we can identify core processes, support processes, and management processes.
These are the basics, these are what we just identified, these are the things we're working on every day.
And, and so with that said, is we believe that should be about seventy percent of their workload. Um, give or take depending on the department, but we'd standardize that and make it consistent. Second is projects, what we heard from departments was, we have too many projects, we can't complete projects, we're not executing, and we're not completing projects. And so what we did find out is within projects, we needed to find projects. Um, an idea that we wanna come back to this council would be is CIP projects, define that. We have a definition for CIP projects, and I believe, um, it was done in two thousand seventeen, I was part of that when I was in finance. I think the definition holds up very well, we can follow that. But specialty projects, or special city projects is what we're calling it, and that is more projects that maybe, um, you know, come throughout the year. Council wants to plant a hundred trees, um, how do we move around workload so we can accomplish that within a year and execute? Uh, the next one is operational projects, so the operational projects are projects that council really doesn't see, but they're important for our success to deliver on other products and services. So for example, uh, IT, IT projects are, tend to be in the back, you don't see them, but they take up time, they take manpower. And those are, those are more your operational projects, but how do we, or how are we able to, or how are we to report those type of projects? So we know what, how much man, man-hours it's taking from a department, so we can deliver on other projects? And how can we move those around? And the last part would be people, we're looking at people as far as PTO, people leave. How do we accommodate training, continuous education, flex, you know, that flexibility for employees, that takes away from manpower. And so when we look at this, obviously, we're looking at a hundred percent, and I believe that by at least, uh, standardizing it and coming up with this idea, I think we can be better at addressing, you know, can we, is this feasible, is this project feasible? And if not, what do we need to do, what projects can we move, having the list of projects, running list, so we can at least move things around? Um, and also at the same time, being able to go back to council, say, it's not feasible to do this project, um, we have these projects in mind, or do we change priorities? And ultimately, that would be council's discretion to change those priorities. But right now, um, let me go back to what I wanted to show, this is what we kinda got based on working with leadership. And as you can see, right now, we really have no, no standardization as far as workload. And so because of that, we have no standardization between department workflow. And that doesn't mean that each department might have their own workflow, but as far as departmental, we don't have a standardization. Um, clear, I think it's unclear for staff, or if staff is meeting council, community expectations. Uh, we got that from the departments, I, I don't believe we have good vehicles or mechanisms to really let us know we're hitting those expectations. We have a mission and a vision, but are we really hitting it? Do we have the metrics to really show that we are, you know, hitting the expectations? Too many open projects, um, we looked at the CIP, just CIP, without even identifying the other projects, operational, if we decide to go with operational projects, or even special projects. Right now, there was a hundred and fifteen CIP projects, I believe is what I count. Um, and so those are a hundred and fifteen projects, and we, that most departments, the majority, I broke them down, but the majority would be, um, you know, public works. And how can we accomplish those? Uh, we wanna make sure that we are executing and making sure that we're delivering to our customers the projects that we promised that we were gonna complete. Uh, overproduction, I, another thing they identified is there's a lot of overproduction within our own processes. Um, and I think we need to do a better job if we can prioritize and each department know what our priorities are, how is our work set, our workload, man-hours? Um, I think we can work more in sync and universal. And then everything is a priority, so nothing is a priority.
Can you give me an example of overproduction?
Yeah, so, for example, with overproduction is we have processes that go to multiple people, and really, we can cut that out instead of overproduce, and it should be touching, one of the, one of the methodologies with lean is, the more people that touch it, the less effective that process is. So, for example, we have processes that might go to, example, legal, does it need to go to legal? It might be a process that really can eliminate legal, and it goes directly out to the customer, and we do a delivery on product or service. Is that?
Yeah.
And then everything is a priority, so nothing is a priority. Um, what I, what we discovered when we worked with leadership, it seems, is that everything's a priority, so we really don't have a way to prioritize. Um, we, we're not trying to come up with solutions that we're working with leadership, and obviously, we want council's feedback before we can go there. But I think, you know, some type of metrics, um, priority metrics, how do we prioritize? So that way, we are executing and delivering on your expectations. And then multiple re, uh, reporting tools, that's another overproduction, if, or overproduction is multiple reporting tools. We have so many different, uh, reports that go out to council, um, how can we trim that, how can we make them effective? I always say to staff is added value, how can we add added value to those reports? Um, do we need to tweak them, are they too many? Um, we have too many standalone, can we condense? There's a lot of ways I think we can improve that, and we'll talk a little bit about that. And then reactive, um, what we see is we're very reactive. And, and in order, we'll never accomplish our expectations, or be able to execute if we're always reactive. I think we need to get to a position to where we have a good strategic plan, and that know that, you know, it's a one-year, two-year, we have one year annually, and then we look at a five-year, even a ten-year, or anything more than a five, though, it's kinda throwing things out on the wall to stick. But at least have a plan that we follow, and making sure that it's in line with council, and then that way, we can be successful by execution. Questions on this concept before we move on? Ideas, or are we off? I just wanna make sure that we have some, at least comments or anything in regards to that seventy twenty-ten that we're trying to accomplish.
The language that we use in process improvement is we, we talked about current state, future state, right? So this is our future state, this is our ideal situation, right? And that's our target, that's what we're aiming towards, that's where we're shooting our bow at, right? But this is our current state, right? And this is, this is not necessarily, the, this particular one is not necessarily super driven empirically or by a lot of data, but this is driven by previous interactions, uh, previous events we've run with staff, previous interactions and conversations we've had with the city manager's office, right?
Yes.
I think, uh, starting with the basics. I had wondered about the mission because it seemed so foreign to me, and in the three years I've been on the council, I didn't think that we had ever discussed it. So to find out now that it was set twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen makes sense. We have, however, had at least three meetings, or conversations about the mission for the comp plan, and that has reflected where we see the city now as much as it is for the future. So, um, I think that, that we need to go back to that mission that we've been looking at for the, uh, comp plan draft, and help make that the mission, because this mission is okay, but it's like Dullesville. You know, there is nothing about innovation, for example, or, um, or healthy community, or any of the things that we have been, uh, talking about previously. And if you, we don't have that in the mission, then of course, why would any staff member, I guess, think it was important to work on? It would be, it would be as if we have no expectation that you do something innovative. But in fact, we do have that expectation.
I agree, we're following the, the what we, I mean, if we're not hitting the mission, then we really already starting off on the wrong foot, and we'll never, you know, be able to hit that, that future state.
Yeah, and that mission and the vision have been on, you know, just sitting there on the website, just going there. And so there was no trigger, even with our annual retreats, there was no trigger for us to revisit that mission. Nothing said, okay, annual mission revision, reviser, or whatever the case is, or it'll always be based on the, on the comp plan. Mission, whatever the case might be, something like that. The other is, when it comes to projects, would be helpful if, um, uh, I don't think we get too many reports, actually. And I see two more reports that I'd like to get. One of them is on the, on the.
So we have one more activity, I think that's where those will fit.
That'll be.
Yeah.
Aye.
Bear? Anybody else on the mission? Cause that's important, cause that's a driver, I think, without, you know, being in line with the mission, I mean, regardless of what we do, we'll never hit expectations.
Yes, I think we need to figure out like, what do we want for our kids that are gonna be growing up here in Commerce City, if it's for the future, correct, right? So I think the mission, my opinion, it does, it's not the greatest, um, I think changing that to what, as far as the council member noble said, makes sense. Um, something that's gonna provide more, uh, more drive, or, uh, I don't know what the word is, but it's something that's, something that's gonna really stick out to, to people who live here, who, uh, work here, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's something we can sell, right? Absolutely.
Yeah, I, I'd like to see it where we're empowering each other to, to, um, see opportunities and seize them.
Absolutely, so if it is the desire, go ahead.
When did you say this mission was put together?
Um, what I found was two thousand fourteen, it seemed like is when it was, uh, two thousand four, we couldn't get the date, cause there's no documentation, but it says fourteen fifty.
I can say yours. The problem with changing your mission statement on a regular basis is it's supposed to be long-term, it's supposed to be, you know, setting you up for a path that you're going to travel on. And if we say that every single council's gonna come and change the mission statement every two years, you're gonna change that mission statement, and that is counterproductive to actually driving the organization in the direction it needs to go. Then you can have reviews of it, I think they can be periodic reviews, but you have to avoid getting into the quagmire of constantly editing these three things. And I think that it's more on the city councils that are elected to lead the city towards these than it is to constantly be crafting new missions and visions.
I agree, if, if you're looking at long-term, absolutely. Um, but I, what I would say is, you don't wanna be changing it, um, periodically, you wanna give it some time, at least, you know, a good ten years out. But I mean, if you want to edit it, like, for example, add, I think there was, um, one was innovation, and I think the other one was sustainability, I think it was. Um, you know, maybe add a piece to it if you wanna grow it, but I wouldn't recommend completely scrapping and start over, I absolutely agree with the mayor. We wanna make this for, um, I think to councilman, or Kim, you said, you know, our children, you know, twenty, thirty years out, and that way, we can get there. Um, but I, I do agree, but it, I, it is an opportunity if you need to, if we need to add to it, but we have to look long-term, is it gonna be here for the next twenty, thirty years?
Yeah, it's balance, right? And, you know, the mission should set us up so that we can set those expectations, right? So if council doesn't believe that this mission allows you to set the appropriate expectations, and that's something we need to revisit. But if we can craft a mission statement that really sets up the core values and the core, the core purpose of, of the city government, we can, we can build those expectations into it, and it won't matter, you know, uh, when a new council comes in, that we have something that's workable for everyone, that everyone can sell.
That's why the comp plan mission is helping. Whatever the comp plan mission says, to see that again would be useful.
We can bring that back. Um, any other questions in regards to, uh, the seven twenty-ten rule?
This is a lot of stuff for, for, for the city manager's office, but.
Where are we at right now in terms of percentages? So, we don't have a good rap, so I just said that it worked, uh, workbook to all departments, and I'll have a better idea. Um, what I'm gonna do is, I'll probably do like a staffing analysis on man, man-hours, and, and come up with a, a number, but right now, I don't have that, that's why I kinda left it open. Um, all I got is kinda, this is what we got from them, and they're working on an exercise right now, all departments are, went out, and hopefully, I'll have better, you know? That's one of our things, the next steps, come back and say, hey, this is where we're at. Um, I truly believe we're probably, let me go back to that, uh, based on the assumption, I'd say we're probably around eighty percent down there, um, on operations. And then I think there's no room for people as much, because everything is engulfed with projects, but that's what I kinda heard, but without looking at the data, it's hard to make that assumption. But we're gonna move on to the last one.
And I'm going to ask your energy one more time, and then we will, I promise we will let you know, I know it's a different audience. So this is the fun part, and so I'm actually gonna ask Councilwoman Noble to, to discuss what, what, what she was going to discuss earlier, right? In terms of, um, these are, what do you need to ensure that we're meeting your expectations? So Councilwoman Noble, what was your example?
Oh, uh, a monthly cumulative list of the activities or projects or whatever that the city council has approved for the staff. So that we can both keep track of what was asked for six months ago, and at the same time, self-regulate in case we shouldn't ask for anything else, or we already asked for it, we don't need to do it again, because we know we have it on the list.
Yeah, and so that's the sort of thing we're thinking about right here, we're talking about what are the tools, what are the, what are the communications, what are the reports that, that you all believe you need? And, and, you know, be as, be as creative as possible, um, to ensure that we're meeting expectations, yeah, Councilwoman Hurst.
Cumulative.
I, I mean. There are, there are reports that you need to dive in and read a lot of, because it's new information, it's not something we saw last month. Then there are reports that we get that are eighty to ninety percent the same, but there's, you know, progress report basically. I think a dashboard would be amazing, like a city council dashboard with our priorities on it, um, that allow kind of.
If you wanna spit it out, we'll put it in here.
Like every two weeks, you know, you get an update on the dashboard, I think that's.
Accumulated project list should be the SIP, the things that the city council does, you know, whatever else that is tasked to the staff to accomplish.
A council work dashboard, absolutely.
Cause some of this comes to us from staff, and they ask for our vote. So a lot of it, like all the SIP stuff, I wouldn't have invented that on my own.
Different than Planner, cause I know Planner has that, right? Different than Planner, the, the, for the council? Yeah, I think, uh, Annette sends it through Planner whenever you have a request.
Oh, that's very different, that's addressing.
Council action items.
Okay.
Yeah, or, or a constituent.
But you're talking about the reports, I mean, projects, right? Ongoing projects.
We're talking about administrative council business, we have a vote on something that is, and we and now it becomes, um, an assignment, if you will, to the, to the staff.
What else, what can we?
KPIs for basics. Every day, that's seventy percent.
You're ahead of us, absolutely.
And I think that that ties into doing away with this work plan quarterly updates, because the work plan is worthless. But KPIs on things that are important to the community, what is our development review timeline, are we meeting that? What are our crime numbers, are we meeting that? What are our traffic, uh, enforcement, things of that nature? Those are actual metrics that we should be tracking, more than whether or not somebody clicked on a stupid Facebook advertisement for an event at a rec center.
I totally like the KPIs, we're looking at strategic planning and adding the KPIs, cause we can measure it, we can measure, we can manage it kinda philosophy, so.
Was it KPI?
But KPI is a key performance indicator, it's, it's an outcome that we use to judge whether or not we're doing something.
Some metrics, just I'm coming up with the metric.
And what is tracking of council work?
So this is what you're talking about with, with the.
Oh, yeah, I was talking about that in number one also.
So those are, those are.
They're tied together, absolutely. Okay.
Anything else, those are good ones.
Any other ideas?
So, so how does a key performance indicator work?
So, for example, um, to, to the mayor's, um, example was, uh, crime, right? So maybe quarterly, there's a dashboard that says you had this many types of crime, second quarter, we're reporting on the same thing, and then we can. Second quarter, we're reporting on the same thing, and then we can actually say, are we improving, are we decreasing, increasing, things like that. It's measurable and it's not just me being subjective and saying, you know, yeah, you know, crime didn't go up that high, but I have numbers, you know, to show that.
Well, like for the weeds, the um you know, community development only wrote us so many citations. And we have a key performance indicator that we want to keep it below, you know, five items.
And what's important about key performance indicators is that they're not retroactive. So a lot of what we do in the current work plan is we compare everything to, oh, well, year to date for last year or what happened in last year. And we want to make sure that we're setting our key performance indicator based off of council's expectations, not based off of our previous performance, right? We don't necessarily know if adding a hundred and twelve more houses this month is a good or bad thing, right? We want to make sure we're setting key performance indicators that let us know that it's meeting your expe- uh your expectations when it comes to development, right? This is a creative endeavor and it's something that gets into the weeds on a lot of stuff, but we're we're thinking broadly right now.
So like when if we're doing like rental inspections, keeping track of.
Yes.
Uh how many were done, how many passed, how many failed?
Absolutely.
Yeah, okay, that's awesome.
Councilmember Hurst.
Um I forgot. Yeah.
Okay, we'll shout it out.
Yeah, sorry.
Any other ones?
All right. So, yeah, so um Councilmember Madera really, really beat us to the punchline here. But we're what we're doing is we're trying to take this and link them to both what the basics are, what council's expectations are for meeting those basics, right? And then we also loop in the projects, did it that other twenty percent of our work. So this goes into building those KPIs, building those dashboards, those reports that are useful for council. And then also what our motto is going to talk about, talking about long-term strategic planning as well.
And so um we talked about examples. I'm not going to go over the examples. I think I got enough information here to kind of develop it. But one thing I do want is like, no matter what tool we use, we need better metrics, goals, and outcomes to report. And I heard that Mayor gave us a good example of KPIs. Um but uh Councilwoman Madera, so that's what I wanted to kind of finish off. I do want to talk about next steps. Um so next steps is we want to provide a a report, going back to the basics, based on all the feedback that we received tonight. Um we'll give you a detailed report that'll go out to council. Um we want to facilitate a session on on council goals and expectations, and I also want to add in there the mission. We'll look at that and come up with maybe. Um look at the comp mission, maybe get those in line. We're currently working, like I said, we'll come back with a report of identifying the seventy, twenty, ten was within each department. I think that's important. And then ultimately, we want to come back with identify the city projects and bring to council a standardized definition for the projects. Um any questions to close out? Well, thank you very much, and I appreciate your engagement. There's a lot of information here. I appreciate. I know it's late, so thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that exercise. Um I think it's very productive and glad to see that we're going in this direction, especially uh remapping some of those reports and information that's provided back to the city council. To include those KPIs, which I think can be very beneficial in ensuring that uh the city government is operating as efficiently and smoothly as possible. So. Thank you very much to the more city center of innovation.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to move on to reports. Mr. Rogers.
Sir. First foremost, I don't need the bullet my report to say this. I want to thank council for its participation. Also, I'd like to thank our residents who are looking in tonight. As well as our staff for what I like to call a great tree lighting event that we had last week. Uh that's going to be hopefully the first of many to come. Over the years to be able to uh really. I'll say, look at how we are as a city and how we take pride in what we do for for the community. A couple of other items, I think as you all are aware, it was in the same manager update last week with for the broader community, we've completed a four-page advertisement. Highlighting the city as part of a site selection uh magazine investment guide. Uh it will be published early twenty twenty-three and sent out to national site selectors. Uh the publication will also be distributed by the Colorado Economic Development International Trade Team during uh foreign trade missions that they have. Uh we are also working with Manufacturers Edge to uh develop a city-based manufacturer that included an online platform. That will be uh showing manufacturers that are interested in participating with the city. Uh with this potential online uh tool on redefining commerce at C three uh gov dot com. Uh with respect to public works, uh the annual striping program is underway. Uh the intent is to have that done by the end of the the end of the year. Uh that's doing work both in the northern range, but also in our core city, and we're seeing somewhere between forty to sixty percent complete. Uh obviously, that's weather dependent, but making great strides there. Uh one thing I would like to share with you about the Fifty-Six Avenue widening two K project, that was one of the artists that you all uh greenlit. Back in March of this year, that's going from a two two lane to a four lane widening for Fifty-Six Avenue. Uh that project will be kicking off next week, hopefully really getting to ramp that up uh in the turn of the new year. Uh obviously, we've been seeing numerous illegal dumpings and uh public works have put a lot of effort and time on a weekly basis. I think we can relax where we actually have a small crew doing trash almost every day for picking up an illegal dumping. I think, as you heard with the MIC three. We're going to try to take some corrective steps in trying to help curtail that. And lastly, with uh PRG, uh Zero Santa, we had three hundred and twenty-five people registered to attend that event. We were sold out, so well attended. Uh project by pre- uh project present by the numbers, we had twenty thousand in financial contributions. We had contribution from twenty-four area businesses and residents, and we worked with thirteen schools in Commerce City. Uh which was able to provide gifts to over two hundred and seventy students. Uh so good work there. Uh there was also last week a uh open house on the Oasis and Second Creek Farms uh parks. Uh that's is the first of what I would say, uh I'll say a more comprehensive outreach um program that we will have. We had about twenty representatives from the community. Uh we've also staff and some council president and also uh our consultant Galloway. Uh it's our uh intent to be able to bring that conversation back to the council, at least giving update on a survey and some of the feedback that we got from the community on January ninth. And last but not least, uh Community Park High School site update, uh staff met last in November with school district on the design task. Uh school school district is in the final stages of contracting with an architect. Uh design meetings are anticipating to get off early in January. Uh one thing that will be a strong focus there is community engagement and input on what they would like as far as that joint use so between the high school site and the park. And as it relates, staff is also working through some final details on the deed for to be able to transfer that property with the property owner and its legal counsel, and we hope to be able to have that close up. So this is going to be at the northeast and northwest corner of what will be future Landmark Drive and Ninety-Six Avenue. That's my report, sir.
Any questions for the city manager? Mr. Hader.
I will have to grab Mr. Hader as he is in his office. One moment, sir.
All right, let's go ahead and give you. Wish to make a report. Councilmember Douglas.
So I went to the tree lighting unit. Congratulate the um the city's staff, everybody who's made that is spectacular event. I got only great feedback from all of the uh different community members that I talked to. We had people coming from Montello and and outside the city, even families. Really enjoyed it. I love the fact that uh the tree lighting was actually outside this year. So with this switch, everybody wasn't going, what's going on? So we it it was just. It was spectacular. So thank you, yeah. Everything from writing letters to Santa, the characters, the reindeer. Um the sweet treats that were offered, everything was wonderful. So thank you. And then I went to the Housing Authority Dinner, um holiday. Dinner that they do every year, and that was well attended. It was great.
Councilmember Ford.
Um I'd just like to uh add on and, you know, Councilwoman Douglas. Uh Councilwoman Douglas hit most of the highlights of the uh tree lighting. It was exceptional. Um I did enjoy it outside. I can't imagine, though, if it was ten below and snowing, it'd help a lot that went well. But we had great weather for for the event. Um staff went above and beyond. Um for being able to to take care of our residents that attended that event. Uh also, uh the Greyhound Park uh unbundling of the new apartments um went very well. Um the only reason I bring that up is uh Mr. Allen was recognized and um ended up falling and and. Ended up getting a bunch of stitches and at his age and stuff, uh I think he's going to end up with some, maybe some potential skin grab. Uh on his head. Uh so I just want to uh give my prayers and speed recovery to the Allen family.
I knew there was something else. Um I attended the same event and um actually uh Mr. Allen, who was also award four back in the day, uh tripped. He didn't fall.
Yeah, well, yeah, he tripped over a pipe on the sidewalk.
Yep, exactly. So I just want to clarify that. Um I think also that was a great event. The holiday lighting was especially good this year. Um I I know that uh there were satisfied people, Councilmember Kim will talk about this, but there were very satisfied people. Um about the Oasis meeting, so that that worked out well. Thank you also for continuing to work on the lighting. And getting the uh traffic lights fixed at Ninety-Six and Landmark for everyone. It's been much safer to have gone from three accidents in a month to none. Is uh really shows you how necessary that light was. So thank everyone for moving so quickly on that as well. And I went to the senior commission meeting as well. Um and uh they're just very appreciative of. Everything that the city has been doing in support of uh of seniors. So thank you.
So a couple of things, uh while you guys were at the tree lighting ceremony, I went to the Oasis Park, which is not the name that has to be chosen for that place. Um it but it was great to see a lot of the residents that were out there able to, you know, kind of put on boards as far as like what the vision. Um as far as how that park would look. Um and then uh you know, Galloway, the the folks, the folks that are actually designing this and all that, I I, you know, they they want to just try to keep city council informed. As to what those next steps are. Um and yeah, it was pretty well. I know Councilmember Noble showed up later on. Um great turnout overall. The other one, too, is I just uh I showed up at the Youth Commission. Um just to check out, to see what they were up to. No, they were just up to at their end of year holiday party, had a great time there. Try to make some uh gingerbread houses and a bunch of other things, too, but it's a great time. Uh Councilmember Douglas was there, um obviously, so that was great overall.
We're in the avenue for the perfect, right?
Big week.
What's that?
No, we do not.
Big week.
It's a memorial park.
Ah, Dutch. Councilmember Hurst. I took the same events and I thought uh I'm not can't really add anything but great comments about. The Greyhound Park and the tree lighting, you know, was very uh surprised by the tree lighting, but because I actually thought Travis was singing as I walked up, so I was super impressed. Uh but the other one was was uh Zero La Santa is always a great event and uh. But you know, we went to the first session, and like you said, it was sold out, and it was a really good. Another another monitor show appreciation for great job by city staff and coming out on the weekend to participate in events.
Councilmember Dyer.
So some of the similar maps and don't know I have much of that.
Mr. Hader.
Um do you have a lot to report this evening? Wanted to let you know that um I will get the litigation update out soon as we. Um also wanted you to know that um so for those of you that aren't familiar, we have different um. Basically, um hearing officers under contract that are there lawyers to hear different items. Um one of those is a a lawyer that is under contract to hear um protests protests from tax cases. Um and that we haven't had one in a long time, um but unfortunately, our hearing officer submitted his resignation today. Um effective early next year, so we'll be in the process of looking for a new uh. We're trying to do a new contract with someone to hear tax protest cases. Um ironically, this comes at a time when we're actually looking at possibly our first uh protest in quite some time. So we're trying to get on that one right away. I have.
Anybody have any questions for Mr. Hader? All right, uh Mr. Rogers and I had a meeting with uh the developer for Legato. Um nothing came out of the meeting other than uh ideas on how the city could be better. All right, um the employee Christmas party, that was a very good success, great turnout. I mean, room was full, people were hot swapping their chair to sit and eat and everything. Uh thanks for everybody that was able to make time to to show up to that. Um I think just a great event and and I think really showcased uh just a. Improvement in morale in this organization. So thank you for everybody that was able to put that on. Um the landing, uh appreciate the opportunity to speak at that, um appreciate uh and Travis and uh his remarks that he put together. I had no updates on on what it is that I said. And and think that it was a very well-written uh little two-minute speech about uh just. The success and and what that project means for our communities. Thank you. Um the Christmas tree lighting ceremony, I I gotta tell you, uh probably the one thing that hasn't been talked about yet, and 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 it was a smashing success. And I greatly appreciate all the work that was done on it. I mean, the fact that we had reindeer in Commerce City, it still just blows my mind. I just, you know. I got got out of my car and started walking up and saw those antlers and thought, we have reindeer in Commerce City. Who would have ever thought? Um just blew my mind. Um but but let me tell you something that that stood out to me more than anything else. And that was whenever I encountered uh Mr. Rogers, and the smile on his face was ear to ear. And and the joy that he took in seeing how successful this event was going was a breath of fresh air. And this was an individual who was out there and was happy and was appreciative and just loved everything that was done. And it came forward, and anybody that talked to him could see those smiles and could see the joy. And and it trickled down because every employee that I encountered had that same smile. And everybody was happy to be there, and there wasn't this sense of obligation. There was a sense of desire for everybody to be there. And I really just want to say thank you, Jason. You put together a great event. Your staff put together a great event, and I know it started at the top with your vision, and it started with just. The positive attitude that you brought to have in that event and making it a success. It really, you deserve so much credit for the way that event turned out, just from your leadership and the fire that you put together, and I get your entire staff phenomenal.
I got a great team.
But I'm going to tell you, though, that that team.
I appreciate that.
That team is humming along because of the head of the team.
I appreciate that, sir.
And and I just, I I I can't even express to you just the joy that I got in watching you. More than anything else that I did, I did more than seeing those antlers and seeing those reindeer, seeing your smile and the positive. Just it it really touched me, and I just thank you deeply for the citizens of Commerce City for the work that you did on that. And the fact that you did it with that positive attitude, and it should, thank you.
Thanks, sir. That means a lot.
All right. That's it for reports. That's it for our study session, but we don't get to go home yet. We're going to adjourn to the special meeting. Let's go ahead and take three minutes for a bow break before we get into the study sessions, so we can minimize interruptions during that. We'll be back in three minutes.
Industry you're talking about is super exciting and I think it's a. As you said, very up and coming technology that makes a ton of sense. I mean like any other mass business like that, it's a great, it's a great opportunity for us. I don't know if it was especially the grant, but I just want to make sure.
Exactly. Uh, the other thing that I have is a an opportunity to meet with the uh. People from Den and I have an appointment set up on the twenty second at one P M. And so we would be able to meet with them to understand. What they're striving to achieve. The superintendents from both school districts are available, inviting the school boards. Uh, and I would like to. Offer that invitation to all of you as well.
And that's a great program too, and Phil Washington announced that last year. At an event at Den as well that we attended and seemed like a great opportunity for Commerce City youth for sure. You're completely right. I apologize, Mr. Mayor.
Um, submission deadline for a letter of intent is uh twelve fifteen twenty twenty two at five P M eastern time. I'm looking for a motion and a second to direct staff to draft a letter of intent for application for this grant. And permission to affix my signature upon that letter.
Well, actually, it is to be included in the letter of it of intent that's being written. So it's a, it's a five hundred word, it's, they have specific guidelines that you have to meet, so. It would be for them to. Submit their portion. As representative of this community. Does that make sense?
I'm looking here, it says mission deadline for letter of intent is two.
We would be a part of that letter of intent.
Who's actually submitting?
Letter of intent is being submitted by super caps.
Then why do is this council need to take action if letters being submitted by super caps?
Because we would need to be a part of it.
So we have party status? So we have, what I mean by party status, they need a representative municipal body?
So are we submitting, are we submitting a letter with their letter?
No, it'd be part of their letter.
So maybe the, the best direction is, obviously, we have to explore all of the approval criteria. And we will fix the appropriate signature based on this middle requirement.
Looking for a motion in a second for the city of Commerce City to support the letter of intent being submitted by December fifteenth. Councilmember Hurst. Have a motion in second for the city of Commerce City to support letter of intent being submitted by December fifteenth. Is there any discussion?
I just have one, one thing. I, I really. Don't know everything about this. The one thing I don't want to happen. That we sign on this letter of intent, they win a seventy million dollar grant, then they don't come to Commerce City, but they got their grant based off of our participation. I know they're not going to make a guarantee that they're going to come here, but I just want us to protect our, our name.
So, so the, the grant is specifically. For communities like ours, and that's why they've been looking at Commerce City. I can tell you. Denver has tried to get this, they, other communities have tried to get them to go with them, but they're committed to Commerce City.
Good. And that's really what, you know, what I mean by that is like this grant mean, they can't even apply for this grant if they don't get a municipal partner. So if we're going to be that municipal partner, I just hope that they'll see it through to the end with us and don't switch to like.
That's why we're bringing the school districts. The community as a whole and, and Denver.
Any other discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? Move on to our executive session tonight. We have two executive sessions. I ask for a motion and vote for each executive session separately. First, I'm looking for a motion in the second entering into executive session pursuant to C R S. Section twenty four dash six dash four oh two parentheses four sub parentheses F for the purpose of discussing. Personal matters specifically the terms of an employment contract with and the appointment of Jason Rogers as city manager. And pursuant to C R S section twenty four dash six dash two oh two. Parentheses for sub parentheses E for the purpose of determining negotiating positions and instructing negotiators with regard to the finalization of the same. To the extent necessary, the city council may also confer with the city attorney pursuant to C R S twenty four dash six dash four oh two parentheses for sub parentheses B. To receive legal advice with regard to such contract terms. Have motion sent in to enter into the executive session for the purposes stated. Is there any discussion? Prior to taking this vote, Mr. Rogers, are you fine with us discussing your personnel and your employment in executive session?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously, seven to zero one excused absence, one vacancy. I'm also looking for a motion to second entering to executive session pursuant to C R S sections twenty four dash six dash four oh two parentheses. Or sub parentheses F and G for the purpose of discussing personal matters specifically related to the recruitment of a city attorney. And reviewing and discussing applications and materials related to candidates for the position of city attorney. Which are documents protected by the mandatory non-disclosure provision of the Colorado Records Act. Have a motion in second enter into the uh executive session for the purposes stated. Is there any discussion? Seeing no request for discussion, do a voice vote. All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously, seven zero one excused absence, one vacancy. Will now enter into executive session. Council will return from the executive session to take action. Moving the broadcast and recording will remain up. The executive sessions are estimated last approximately one hour and fifteen minutes.
Councilmember there?
Second.
Have a motion in a second to extend the automatic German time of the council meeting by no more than thirty minutes. Is there any discussion? Seeing their request for discussion, do all those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously seven to zero with one excused absence and one vacancy. This isn't certified yet. All right, next up. Looking for a motion in a second to approve resolution two zero two two dash one five. Councilmember Madera.
Hello.
Councilmember Ford.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve resolution two zero two two dash one one five. Resolution needs to be read in its entirety because it was not on the agenda. This is a resolution appointing Jason Rogers as city manager and approving appointment agreement. Whereas the city council desires to appoint Jason Rogers as the city manager of the city of Commerce City, Colorado, effective December thirteenth, twenty twenty-two, and to set forth the terms and conditions for his appointment. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Commerce City, Colorado, is finding. Section one findings. The recitals to this resolution are incorporated as findings of the city council. This resolution is found to be necessary for the preservation of the public health, safety and welfare and in the public interest. Section two appointment. Jason Rogers is appointed as the city manager for the city of Commerce City, Colorado, effective December thirteenth, twenty twenty-two, subject to the terms and conditions set forth in the employment agreement finalized on this day. Section three approval of agreement. The employment agreement of Jason Rogers is hereby approved in the form as substantially agreed to by the parties. The mayor and city clerk are authorized and directed to sign in a test to the employment agreement on behalf of the city of Commerce City, resolved in pass this twelfth day of December twenty twenty-two, city of Commerce City, Colorado, Benjamin A. Huesman Mayor. Is there any discussion? Before we vote, I'd like to congratulate you, sir. This is a monumentous occasion in your career to reach this level, and I have no doubt that you will do great things for our residents, our businesses and our city as a whole, as well as the seven hundred employees that are entrusted in your leadership. I know that you will rise to the occasion and exceed every expectation placed forth by this city council and every future city council, so long as you decide to remain in Commerce City. And I hope that is a long time. Congratulations.
Thank you, sir, and thank you, council, and thank you, community who's listening still for entrusting me to help guide and lead and be supportive of you all. So I take this opportunity and we'll run with it, and I just have to say thank you all for this opportunity to be a part of a legacy for Commerce City and to see those be a part of their own legacy going forward. So thank you very much. It means a lot.
Have a resolution, or excuse me, a motion and a second to approve resolution two zero two two dash one one five. The resolution has been read. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously seven to zero, one excused absence and one soon to be vacancy. Congratulations, Mr. Rogers, our new city manager. Includes all of the business we have this evening. I do want to reference the fact that those of you that saw Councilmember Davis did resign from his position as council member of Ward Three. Based on the schedule, we will likely certify that vacancy on December nineteenth at our next regularly scheduled meeting. There will be a thirty day window in which we have to appoint somebody for that or go to a special election if that's the decision of the council. That would put us needing a special meeting on January ninth, which we already needed a special meeting on January ninth for the appointment of a Ward Three council member. My ask is for the city staff to start advertising that process and what everything will go ahead of time so that people are aware that that is coming in the event that we do certify that vacancy on summer nineteenth, because I don't want to get into a period where people have already left for the holidays or we run up where people don't know. So anything we can do to advertise his resignation and the process going forward for us to certify that ahead of time so that people are aware of that and understand they'll be watching the city website, moods and announcements for the process. Councilmember Noble?
And to clarify, you must be a resident of ward three to apply.
Yes, and that position will serve out the remainder of his term, which will be another three years. Correct?
I agree.
That's correct.
I agree. Yeah.
It won't turn over next.
That's correct.
Okay. Okay, um, I conclude all the business we have for the evening. Have a good night, have a good week and, uh, be safe. We're done.